We can chat with Brandon during seven minute meeting.
I would love that.
There's no way you can do this at twenty minutes.
We're having a, um, like, uh, she was miserable last night.
We have, we're waiting in the morning for raindrops to come back, so it's all fine. It doesn't wrap up. You wanna send a strapping young lad left to carry your crap up the stairs?
Especially in the apartment goes down like a dorm where they have a billion people helping you.
Yeah, yeah, last year, all the frat guys were on the curb waiting and they just held it right to a room that was slick. But this year, we've got the apartment and she's got all of the kitchen stuff. So she's bringing exponentially more than the rest. And I was like, do you think that we could get it all in our vehicles? And it's like, I don't know, I think Toby was onto something once at U-Haul and I was like, uh-uh. So then I went upstairs and out there, the whole hallway is like full. There's just a big enough trail to walk through. And I was like, was, Michaela, your stuff is annoying. He was like, well, you're annoying, so. Deegan's all settled in?
Yep, yep.
And then Mason, right, are rooming together?
Yep. Nothing but football.
Yeah.
Loving it.
Is Hayden all settled in?
He's all settled in, all settled in, so.
Captain, he'll be in the same circle as Michaela if he hangs out with Waxlyer. Jack's Wax. Cause Jackson, her friend's boyfriend got an apartment together. They'll end up at the bar.
I don't want to answer by you. You guys are trying to keep it light tonight or what? We'll be on the rough side today, didn't we?
You have a lot of things.
Debs fans are cool with him every week, it's their turn. Debs fans are cool with him.
I saw, I saw you over there hobnobbing with the guys again.
Always something.
Well, yeah, no, they're.
Yeah, that's why I'm surprised they don't give them another protected, or X-ray. At the courthouse.
Because like there was, they called, did you find out how many they called? Cause there was like, there were at least sixty some in our room and then there was another one.
Yeah. What the heck kind of a trial was it? It's the one on the front page from Santiago. I don't.
Oh, yeah, we should put Mike's on.
Please stand up and he should.
I know this is gonna be a long meeting, but what if, what if we needed to, uh, what's the proper word? Reset for a bathroom break? I'm assuming this is gonna take about two to three hours, but what if, what if we needed to take a bathroom break?
You're supposed to have this quoted so it takes an hour.
Seven minutes.
It only, well, if you think it's, I guess, yeah.
No.
Uh, well, my intention is, my intention is you go line by line.
Okay. You're looking nice.
I know.
We were depending on you, buddy.
I know, I try.
It's just not gonna look like some crack.
Well, but you would realize seventy percent of that is they voted for that fire.
Yeah.
Their budget would be nothing if it wasn't for that.
Well, Minneapolis St. Paul came in at seven point, something.
St. Cloud also hasn't spent money in a long time. Very long time.
Did you get my email, Brandon?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd say it's very tentative right now. Let's call the city council meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty five to order. Let's please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number four, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to discussion on the twenty twenty six budget. City investment update. Hold everyone seven minutes.
Hey, Monica. Okay, I'm the present speaker, okay? Hey, Monica, you're on speaker and we are on the investment update right now.
Okay.
So do you wanna just go through what you provided in the package?
Sure.
I know it looks a little different than what they've seen.
Sure, so on that list, um, there's, on each line, there's, um, each individual line is a fund. So the one hundred, that would be the general fund. And then from there, um, it's a different fund. Each one of those lines is the balance of the interest through the month of July. Um, we haven't gotten our statements for the month of August yet, but through the month of July, every, all the investments are entered. And, um, that's the balance of each fund. And then on the bottom, which shows, uh, um, the total of all of the funds. Which would be that, um, eighty-nine thousand sixty-seven. So, um, in the month of July, um, we can see on that, um, it has, on the credit balance, it's just for this month. And that's the twelve thousand two oh five eighty. Um, so it looks like we are tracking at around that ten thousand to fifteen thousand per month. Um, with some of the investment changes that we've made and, um, using our funds to the best that we can.
Um, and I'll just, Monica, we did, uh, take a look at that and we have adjusted some of our revenue projections in the budget based on some of those earnings that we're, we're at.
Since they've been doing, okay, yeah. Yes. So, uh, we looked at the, like, the first half of the month, so up through June, we looked at how things were tracking. And then adjusted, um, guessed, um, a guesstimate for the whole year based on those first six months. So, um, we do have some more things, so like the, all the bond funds came in and we were, we're investing those. And so it might be higher than what we anticipated based on the amount of funds we have available to invest. But, um, we wanted to, um, estimate conservatively on that.
So what you mean by that is when we get bond proceeds, we can put them into some short term. There's limitations on what we can do because we need to have it to pay the money out. But, so we have a little bit of influx in cash, but then it goes back out to pay for the project. So there might be a little bit more interest earnings. Okay, any questions on that, I guess, so? I'll just keep you on the line, Monica, if you're good for the next one.
Okay.
Moving on to the city debt update.
So the debt, um, Monica, two things there, I had her add in the PFA so you knew where we were at. Um, I think it's pretty straightforward, um, it kinda shows what the payment is, so there's.
Is it the payment schedule?
And then there should be a one that just says it's the PFA, the most recent.
Oh, yep.
Yep. Um, cause that's not closed yet, so we saw that open. Um, but it's pretty straightforward, I think it just shows what we pay this year, like how much we pull out of each utility fund, cause we have, uh, funds committed from the enterprise fund. Um, so you can see, and obviously it's got the big new one, the twenty twenty-five A that's coming on, um, on the regular page. But then the PFA that we're still drawing on is here. And we do, are paying, we have resumed payment, we had the resumed payments on the PFA loan. So that's why you'll see that little note about the payment. So that starts and then that just adjusts as needed throughout the schedule.
So it's not principal and interest?
It is principal and interest.
Why is it adjusting?
It's adjusting because we draw more on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so then it has to fluctuate the payment. But it's still, it's a thirty year, um, that we started paying on at the two point five eight seven.
And how much is available to draw on?
Um, we have another four million? Or six million left to draw on. We aren't drawing on everything that we were approved for.
Okay.
Um, it's not our intention. I would, I would anticipate we draw another million, maybe a little more than that.
And what would, what would that go to?
Um, what would that go to as far as, that would go to the PFA. Sewer fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have an estimate of what disbursements are to come in yet?
For the, um, what is the retainage left again, Mark, do you remember? Like, four hundred thousand or something?
I would say it's six.
Six, six hundred thousand?
Six and a half, I thought.
Sorry, I muted myself. Um, yeah, I, that sounds about right.
Six hundred, okay.
Yeah.
And then we have, um, the cash flows that I'm working through for the, if we do the sell side, so that could affect that. So we may go back and draw on some expenditures that we didn't draw on. Um, like some legal admin, we just kinda paid cash for that. We might look at that and draw some of those to free up some cash. It kinda depends on, you know, what I find out with how we would cash flow this. I'm still getting, and I don't have a straight answer on how many lots we can sell upfront yet, so. But we actually did well when it comes to the PFA loan. Um, I know probably five years ago, my goal was like ten to twelve million. And I think Bolton and May thought it was crazy. But we did well as far as our appropriations and such. So it is actually where we anticipated we wanted to be as far as a debt standpoint.
Okay.
For this bigger project, and it's a thirty year, which is a huge advantage for us at that interest rate.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay. And for, if we move to the payment schedule? We have two loans that are near completion.
Yeah, so.
Are we, how, do we know when the end date is on the twenty fifteen and the twenty twenty?
So one is, I brought that sheet with me. Monica, do you remember, is there two years on, two or three years on the refunding? Do you recall?
I think it was three.
Okay. And then the next one would be the fifteen, which is, was only a ten year, so that'll be coming quick too. I believe the fifteen was only a ten year, that was for itself, wasn't it? Yep. Um, so that, that'll follow, and that should be though, twenty twenty, then two thousand fifteen. And those are all, so when we bonded, um, the latest project, we structure that bond and we wrap it. So we try to keep things as level as possible. There is going to be an uptick with this le- last project because it was so big. Um, but we try to wrap it where we, um, can slowly creep it up. It doesn't go up, down, up, down. We want it to stay kind of steady. I can sh- I can share that with you guys, I can send it out to you if that's helpful. Um, I just got the schedule, updated schedule from the bond council this week, so I can send that to you. But I will say, even though we have bonds dropping off, we have other ones ramping up. Eighteen and the twenty twenty-five will ramp up because of how we wrap them.
Right.
So.
Okay.
It's not that we're gonna all of a sudden have all this couple hundred thousand, that's not what happens. It, it's specifically designed to try to keep it level, um, so we don't have big fluctuations.
Right. So, like a tier approach?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so like the eighteen, when we structured that, because of some of the other payments we had that were higher, we actually started low. And if you remember, the water and sewer took care of that for the first few years. Now the principal and levy's coming on.
Okay.
Because those other ones are coming off.
Yep. Good. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, Monica, I'll let you go.
Okay, give me a pause if you need anything else.
All right, we'll move into the operational budget overview. Would it be starting at general fund?
It's up to you, wherever you wanna start.
In our packets, that'll be, I suppose, easier to start there. All right, any comments right away from council on budget overview, starting with the general fund? Or anything of note or additional comment from Sarah?
Um, I don't think, I mean, not a whole lot of fluctuation.
No.
Lot of flat, um, things that have gone up are just kinda things that we see tracking or like, um, we've seen, you know, we anticipate more expenses or whatever that the case may be. One thing I'll mention too, like building permits and then the payment to the inspector, those kind of offset. We retain a small portion.
So if the interest is the, the big change for?
Yeah, and it depends. In some interests, you know, you see more in other funds, it depends on, all those funds have a certain assigned portion and that fluctuates, you know, how much interest earnings, so. Um, but yeah, we are seeing good, positive earnings compared to maybe four or five years ago, it's pretty tough. Um, I'll just note, you know, I don't think we're anticipating any big changes in court fines, we kinda talked about that.
There's a, there's a big difference between other receipts in twenty-four versus twenty-five. What, what do those other receipts compromise, where'd they come from?
Um, other receipts in twenty-four, um, it's probably some type of miscellaneous charge that we got reimbursed for, I got to.
All right.
Um.
So it isn't anything, there's anything that's gonna be constant, every year?
No.
All right.
No, um, and as you can see, twenty-five didn't have anything.
Same we have got, yeah.
But we every once in a while get, um, like we had a, we have insurance dividend sometimes we get. Or we may get, um, like a settlement payment, like those P fossils are weird receipts. We don't get that regularly. Um, every once in a while you'll have that fluctuation, um. But as you can see, I, I, we are usually pretty slow to overstate the, we're gonna, we're not gonna move the projection on the revenue side unless we have some good evidence to show for.
All right, all right.
Okay. Uh, Katie, looks like we're getting additional state aid?
Yeah, we, we looked.
We called the state, didn't we, on that one?
Yes, we called the state to see how their formula, if that changed at all from years past. And it did not, so then I just looked at what it was the last few years and how it increased and.
Okay.
So I just added on, or what, to anticipate what it would be.
When will we, when will we know the final?
Till you get paid.
Yeah.
They don't promise you nothing.
Oh, okay. Question mark, all right.
We've been close though.
Yeah.
The only time we have to be careful is if somebody goes on unpaid leave and we don't have a position filled, cause then we can't turn in those hours.
So like, for example, for twenty twenty-five, the reason it's blank is because we haven't been paid yet?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a historical month that they normally pay, or is it just?
It's fall, isn't it?
Yeah, um, it gets automatic direct deposit, I don't physically get the check.
I'd say October.
Yeah, so it's automatically deposited, so I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
October sounds right.
Increased activity, seesaw agreement, all right. Not much changing with park department.
Um, we did propose an increase in the Holdridge Park rental fee to two hundred, if you saw on the fee schedule. I don't anticipate that's gonna bring in much. And, and, and park fees do kinda fluctuate. I mean, I think we'll rent Holdridge, but some days are better, some years are better than others, I can. You might make an extra five hundred bucks, it's not gonna be big money.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, moving to expenses unless there's more discussion around revenues. Moving on. Did council have any questions or comments around expenses? On, we'll say, the first page of the general fund of expenses?
The humane society fees? Are we okay with going up to two thousand?
Do we even know where we're at today?
Um, we're still under budget, so we said max of two this year.
Okay.
So I think we've been billed for, it hasn't been too bad, like, it's, I think it's under a thousand yet. But they don't bill us timely, it's every three months, so. Do you know if we sent in a lot of animals?
I only know three, I only got an, or emails three times.
We.
Two or three.
We have been kinda doing, you know, when they call the city hall, we really encourage them to try to find alternatives. Um, so sometimes that helps, you know, we'll take the information on the, you know, if there's a dog missing or like, you know, try to get it, find the owner, so to speak.
So decreasing that, just say a thousand, would that help?
It's not gonna, it's not gonna do much, but.
It's not, it's not gonna change much on the levy.
But I mean, you can. I mean, that's why I think I put the note, didn't I put a note in there?
Yes.
Monica and I did. Yeah, we're okay.
I thought at one of the last meetings we talked about that, we're looking at going from a thousand to two thousand.
That's what I had in my notes.
Yeah, that's kinda what we agreed on. I, I don't think I'd wanna go any higher now, so.
So police department, for expenses, we're increasing our budget for vehicle repair with two brand new vehicles?
No, it's actually, it will be lower. It's just what I did is combined the two accounts into one.
Okay.
So it, in, on here, it just looks like it's bigger, but it's, I just moved to make it more condensed, so I don't have so many accounts. It just moves some money around to make it, so it's actually lower.
Okay. Good, thank you for clarification.
Do you wanna talk about your staffing, just so they know what's in there? What's not, or?
Yeah, for the staffing, um, I was advised to cut, so I cut a lot of the part-time hours. So we will not be having the permanent part-time, this, um, mine anymore. And so what it'll be is the, a lot of the part-timers will just be working, I mean, will be about twenty to twenty-two hours worth of coverage. It'll vary depending, um, depending on also vacation, it may go down to only eighteen hours of coverage a day, so.
Sure. And does that change during school year when code, officer Cody is in, at the school?
Yeah, it all depends on the schedule and who takes vacation and when and, so. And who I can get for part-time, cause I have to also watch how many hours part-timers get also, so.
How many part-time have we got so far?
There's six, but I'll be putting, the two are still being backgrounded yet, so we'll have eight. So, but they all have other full-time jobs, most of them, so it's hit or miss if we get. I mean, there's lots of times where I have to do creative scheduling to get people their vacation they need and all that.
So we have eight part-time, two pending?
Well, six, two pending.
Six, two pending?
Yeah.
But these are just casual.
Yeah, they're casual.
Casual on call.
They have full-time jobs outside of this.
How many full-time do we have?
Including me.
Okay.
Um, I'll also just, so, just so everybody understands, when we ran this budget the first time, was it like twenty-eight percent or something that came back on the levy? It was ugly with all the capital and, um, you know, just increases employment, insurance, all that stuff. Um, so, yeah, we did, there was some cutting, but that's up to the council to decide if, if they wanna reprioritize. If you want to put money into a different department versus another, or that's, that's what this meeting is for.
Yep, okay.
And, and then we also have worked in the union contract requirements too as well in this budget. So that's why you're seeing some uptick here, but that was part of the union.
Okay.
What's, three full-time union members, correct?
Correct.
We have four full-time, including you.
Including me, but only I can't be part of the union.
Okay. Thanks for that.
So moving forward, anytime in the future, are we looking at a permanent part-time officer? Is that something we could look at?
Is that what's proposed to be removed, is the permanent part-time?
I did remove it with this.
So no more hiring, right? Like you're not hiring right now, except?
Permanent's a little different, maybe you wanna explain that?
A permanent part-timer was a part-timer who could work, they would be part of the union and they could work a fourteen, up to fourteen to sixteen hour week, hours a week.
Okay.
So they were more of a routine or scheduled base, you know, routine scheduler.
Sure.
We had one, how long did we have one, Katie? Couple of years ago, right?
Twenty-one.
That long ago?
Yeah.
Wow. Um, but see with the union rules, we have to, Katie has to watch hours very closely because, um, if you go over that, then they're automatically included and can bargain.
Sure.
Um, so that's always where we've struggled.
Mm-hmm.
Where you just accept one and then bring them to the hours.
What does it do, what does the permanent part-time do to the salary?
I cut, I believe it was originally ten grand off.
I think so. It wasn't cra- what you came in wasn't that much, you know, we had talked about it.
Mm-hmm.
Permanent part-time would still be cheaper to a full-time officer, correct?
Right, cause you're not paying for the insurance and that. But then you have, well, if they bargain, they could get the increase of COLA too.
Yep. But our, but our COLA, it doesn't matter because we pay our, we just keep our part-timers on step one and we build in the COLA because we've retained them better, we've talked about that on personnel. Um, and since we've done that, that's been very helpful on retention. Um, but they could negotiate other things.
So when you adjusted the salary, it was to remove the permanent part-time salary?
Yep.
And the question on the table is, do we want to have that position filled?
In the future? Do we feel is all we need it? I mean, it seems to me that we're always struggling to fill hours with our part-timers and kind of a revolving door sometimes.
And if we're talking future and we're actually possibly getting some housing, manpower is an issue to me.
Well, and you have, you have a good problem in that we retain some employees who now earn more time off. You know, we have employees that have lives outside of their jobs, so they're, you know, they want their time off. It, it's a, it's a good thing, cause we, we have some employees that have been around a long time, stability.
Let's, uh, put that one in the parking lot as just an opportunity as we're looking at the levy and continue to, to adjust, um, what that could look like if we were to add, you said what, ten thousand back if, okay, if we went that route, okay. The other half of the battle is actually filling it. You know?
And I know one of the part-timers that we are currently backgrounding now, he would be interested strongly in that.
All right. Anything else on police? Building inspection's pretty self-explanatory. Street department?
Snow removal salaries, that include overtime, Mark?
We don't get much overtime, most of the guys comp theirs.
Keep it down low so you don't.
Most of the guys will comp theirs.
Okay, all right.
If we actually get a winter.
Other than saying, we, we budgeted thirty-one-five for twenty-five, granted, you know, we still have twenty-five left, but I'd be surprised if we actually hit our budget. We should come in under budget on this, on this year.
Yeah, it, it's, and you know, it, you just don't, like, who would've thought we'd had the wet summer we had? Like, if that keeps going, oh, boy.
Yeah, if we get that snow, we're in trouble.
That's part-timers in that too, Mark? Or is that all full-time?
For snow?
Yeah, pretty much, we have very minimal part-time.
Okay.
We buy all our fuel locally, or do you get some from the county?
We get most from Brenney's. But it all will come out of that line, wherever that is.
Sure.
We have snow fuel, yeah, twenty-two.
So would we say there could be an opportunity to shave the twenty-sixth budget in the snow removal?
I would not recommend it. Just 'cause you had a couple, you know, a year without snow, going back to previous history.
You're, you're messing with bloody, her mother nature, so.
Yeah.
I want my butt covered.
Okay. Do you happen to know what we spent in twenty-three?
No.
Okay.
I think we spent more than that.
About.
Cause there's just two, two dry ones now.
Okay.
I think it was more normal.
Yep, that's why we're up there. Plus you gotta remember you've had two COLAs in there also with four employees.
Yep.
You know, so.
Didn't you cut in twenty-three a little?
We have been tweaking them down, yeah, several of them.
Well, I think, are we doing okay on salt though?
That's my next question.
Yep, salt is. We're gonna be down on, on that again, but.
Let's see, I thought I saw a salt expense.
Yeah, we used to be more, but it's lower because I think he's got a good stockpile.
Yeah, it's a stockpile from the year prior, yep.
Do we buy with the county to get a better quantity?
We buy direct through the state bid.
Okay, so that's about the best price you can get then?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Refresh my memory, what do we have for vehicle maintenance repair twenty-twenty-five? High right now?
There we go, that's where.
Get out of the general fund? I do not remember.
I mean, I just see we're a little over budget there.
Yeah, I do not remember here.
All right.
I remember seeing it, I can't. Cause I remember asking you about it.
We had that wing on the snow plow, we had a couple things there, but we're on a back truck expense, Turbo went out on that. But that's not, you guys don't have that yet, that sewer. It's actually on my desk.
Can't remember, was it the loader or anything?
Was it a plow truck? Well, we had the plow, but nothing.
We have a new truck now, right, or a newer truck for snow?
Yeah, twenty, and it was, both plows had, if somebody repairs. Got the old one handy, I mean, we towed last year, Andy's had to tow it.
Okay.
I would say half of that's probably those. We can get that for you if somebody does want it, I mean, it's obviously.
Well, it's pretty hard, it's hard to keep that sink too.
Oh, yeah, you can't, you can't predict that.
Evidently we needed it to fix it or replace it. Yeah, I just, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a piece of equipment that gets used hard.
And then you made a note here, you shifted some of the full-time salary to the parks, which is why we see the increase there for the ten thousand?
Yeah, so that's something that Monica looks at, just to see how we're tracking, but it can fluctuate from year to year depending, you know, like parks, obviously, we had a mow every three times a week, is different than when we're in a drought and so forth.
And in salaries, like we did more work on the lion shelter last year, so the guys were doing some of that. Our goal this year, that is, uh, you know, the warming house, which will go somewhere in the parks. So, that's kinda where we're putting it.
Looking at two of those, right? Warming houses? You, you just have the one?
Just have one.
Okay.
Yeah, one ring, one house.
So, you know, I know the, the parks and the street and, you know, s- snow and all that's kind of broken out. For the, for your team, who does, they do all those things. So you and your team have the salary of the Parks Department, the salary of the snow removal, and the salary of street? Does that sum up this?
Salaries are taken out of those.
And a portion, water and sewer.
And then water and sewer, okay.
And sewer's been, when we get there, it should be running very high. Hopefully that's gonna tame back down next year, and there's gonna be more put back to these other, you know, there's a lot of stuff we didn't do this year we should've been, we wanted to be doing, I should say.
And remind me again, it's you and how many full-time?
Three others.
Plus three others?
Yep.
And then pretty much your part-time is what usually during the summer?
We have the two.
This year was two, right, yeah.
That's just the two part-time in the summer, right?
And then if he hires any seasonal pushers?
I may have to have someone to help this fall, 'cause I, my one summer kid was done today and the other one's already at football, so.
Yeah, they're like.
I see him for three hours in the afternoon.
Okay, so the salaries for Public Works is you plus three full-timers, and we divide that salary out amongst all of those areas?
So it's based on what they work, so they track every hour while they're working. So.
We have time to fulfill.
Right, are we, but are we, when we do our budgeting, are we just factoring forty-hour work weeks? Or are we factoring in like, an average of fifty-hour work weeks?
No, we budget, like, the extra gets budgeted for like, snow, that's an obvious one.
Right.
But we're essentially budgeting, yes, like a forty-hour, they have benefits, so it's, it still works out to be about a forty-hour. Um, and then they comp whatever's extra.
Sure.
You know, so it's not, we don't factor in a lot of extra overtime, it's just, the snow is probably the biggest one.
Okay.
When you work some this year because of the special projects, but.
And then when they comp it, they're comping it at time and a half, so, like, if they work snow, it's one and a half out of the budget it's taken.
Okay.
So then when they ta, and then they take that, those hours later.
They're not taking the pay, but they're, the way Monica does it, it.
Puts it in the bank.
The hours in the program, take it back out of that fund, the time and a half out of the comp.
Sure. And they just comp it basically like PTO?
Yeah, vacation sick.
Vacation sick.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess, make sure, make sure I'm asking my question correct here.
Are, are, are you looking at adding on a full-timer?
That's what we wanna do, I mean, that's.
Okay, would a, would a full-time, part-time work for you if you had an individual would do that rather than have?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Doesn't make any difference.
People don't wanna work part-time as we've, you know.
Well, a lot of people don't wanna work full-time.
Right.
And sometimes you can get somebody that says, hey, yeah, I'd be willing to work a couple, three days a week, but, you know. I don't know if it'd work for you or not.
Back to the question, though.
You have to know what you need, I guess, but.
There's, uh, if we have four people, plus a couple of part-timers, forty hours a week, times whatever the salary is, we take into consideration, um, benefits and, uh, you know, step increases and such. Does this math math as a whole, or is this, or, or is this more money than we're actually paying?
This math's on our expense for the current year.
If we add them all together, if we put, if we put all of them together in the, the Public Works bucket?
Yep.
Does that equal the four full-timers plus two part-timers salary at forty hours plus benefits? Or are we expecting it to be over?
Just salary, benefits would be elsewhere.
Okay.
There's insurance.
Oh, yeah, like, okay, sure, insurance.
What it doesn't factor is what we would call like severance. So what's in their banks, what that liability is, that's reported on your financials. That is outside of the operating of the current year, that's a different liability, that's hanging out in that bucket. So when we have somebody term, we have the healthcare savings plan, there would be a charge on those accounts for those.
Yep. So, I mean, just again, apologize if I'm.
So they get the same benefits whether they're part-time or full-time?
No, no, no.
There'd be less benefits.
There're less benefits if you're part-time.
Correct, okay. I thought there would be, but I'd.
So I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use easy math. And just to get my point across, if we had four full-timers at fifty thousand dollars apiece, two hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Two part-timers at twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, so we're at a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Does the salary of parks, snow, water, sewer, street, et cetera, does those salaries equal two fifty? Or do they equal more or less?
Um, I can, yeah, like, we have a.
I mean, if we're, if we only paid, we'll say, again, easy numbers, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in salary to your team, but we're budgeting, or, you know, over or under, but we're saying we need, you know, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to cover it all. That would tell me, well, maybe we do need a full-timer. Or are we over-expensing when we, in, in inflating our numbers?
We don't pay overtime for those people.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, but they, they have comp banks that are quite substantial.
Right, so they just keep on accruing?
Yeah. I think I had to mention, like, the, the comp.
And I assume we have no cap on that?
There is a cap, but, um, sometimes we've had to waive the cap because we don't have a choice.
Sure.
You gotta send, you know, Mark's gotta go out, Katie's gotta go out, they gotta cover the shift, it is, so sometimes. I mean, and that's just for everybody, hourly, everybody. But no, the, what is expense in the current year is their regular, and then if, if they have any overtime, I don't know the last time we paid overtime for anybody. It's been a couple of years, what?
Holidays.
Holidays we may pay out, but that's like an eight-hour year.
Yep.
That's your liability that's accruing, but in the current year, that's what they're getting paid, their forty hours a week every. I do have a spreadsheet, how Monica figures this.
Okay.
And I can show you, we just don't put it in the packet, 'cause it does have some sensitive, but we figure.
Oh, sure, I just wanna make sure that, I just wanna make sure that we're not overstating
Yep.
our expense line, uh, and so it doesn't look like our levy maybe is not as worse as it could be, right?
So just so you know, she has this worked, their salary, health insurance, dental, everything.
Okay.
Annual expense, and then you see those codes?
Yep.
Those are all filtering in. Um, down here, um, is all the part-time seasonals, those are kind of lumped.
Okay.
Based on our total wages, so this is how she figures. And then, like, how we split on the bottom here, like, 'cause sewer gets a portion for some people. There's, that's, that's all funneling into those spreadsheets, so you know. And she could probably explain it to you if you wanted to come in and, you know, get deeper dive into it.
No, I think that helps, no, I just wanna make sure that, uh, you know, so the, these salary increases, when we see budget increases from year over year, my assumption would be that, as in a large part to just probably overall, uh, step increases or, or, right, salary increases
Yep.
year over year?
Yep, so, I mean, I mean, we do have, and the reason I don't usually put that in there is because some of the health stuff is really not, it's not public, all of it.
Sure, well, yeah, that's.
The details, you don't need to.
It takes a little piece of work to appropriate each one of these salaries out of every pump.
Yeah, I think part of my question was just, you know, making sure that we're in line if we have all these different salaries in these six different buckets, do they at least somewhat align with
Yep.
the reality of what we're actually paying out, you know, for these five, six people a year?
And we have to tie out, um, like, we have to tie out everything too, because we get, um, like, workers' comp. I don't wanna be, they have to go off of actuals, because it costs more money to pay workers' comp on a police officer than it does on an admin. So, like, if I have an admin person working in the police department, I don't wanna charge him as a police officer, I wanna charge him as an admin, 'cause it's a safer job. So we have to pinpoint where everybody works and tie that out every year.
And, and, and you have to be appropriated what, what's coming out of each fund. It's gotta have a bearing on the different fundings and grants and stuff that we get
Yes.
from the government, so you gotta have a true picture of what it's costing at each one of these departments.
Yep. Yep, and, and that's where Katie has to verify the wages every year, return and report those to get that aid. And Mark does the same thing for fire and so forth. But yes, it's, um, it is kind of a, a messy thing here, um, but we do have to tie them out to the spreadsheet. And I don't do as much of that legwork, Monica does more of it now.
Nope, thank you, that answers my question, I just wanna make sure that we're not overstating.
Kudos to Monica, 'cause that takes a little, uh.
Her spreadsheet looks like she has it figured out.
No, we'll have to do that.
So. Any other comments or questions around street before we move into, uh, general expenses? All right.
Well, we wanna go back up to general?
Uh, wait, sorry, am I going backwards? No, uh.
That's part of street, the top of that next page.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, no, hold on.
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, it, streets is a part of the general fund.
Okay.
It's a, it's a department in the general fund, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's a header.
That's why your general fund is so big, 'cause it has all your critical functions.
Sure. Well, I feel like I've moved to the page.
And if you ever see our cleaner, thank her, because she's our steady Eddie that keeps us in
Cleaning salary, sure.
budget, she does a great job, she's always dependable, so if you ever see her. We're very happy with her.
That's all it counts.
Do you wanna go to parks, or do you wanna move on to?
Uh, parks, yep, sure. Parks, we're ready for your, touch with salary, we're good.
Tree servicing, I think, was your biggest change, wasn't it?
Looks like it, yeah.
I think you requested that, didn't you?
Yeah, 'cause we've been blowing that one out of the, but we've been taking a little bit out of street there too, just 'cause we've been, you can see what we did in fourteen. You know, we don't have fifteen, I think some of the trees on the north end, we put under street, 'cause it's a street project. So.
Sure.
Some of that removal, is that up to you guys, or is that the states that say such and such diseases, whatever, they gotta go?
We don't have any diseases that we know of in town right now, so, knock on wood.
I didn't know if they were involved in.
Yeah, well, if you get like a Dutch almond, whatever, you have to say they'll come in, or
Yeah, I didn't know if they were involved in control of that.
Or if Ashley comes in or whatever, is Ashley a bug?
No, it's good.
All right. Steph, any questions? Okay. Uh, moving on to water?
This one's a struggle. So we tried to simplify, so you know, on the revenues by moving the combo, 'cause we don't have the combo usage like we used to, if you recall, with the industries, now we'll get some of it back.
Oh.
And we're tracking, we're not tracking at budget, um, we're below budget. Well, look what's happening, it rains two inches every other week, I feel, so. The, the proposal in the fee schedule does an incremental increase, you know, based off, I didn't do what the water studies said, 'cause I kinda got the impression that that wasn't really something the council was too excited about, was jacking it that quickly. But, uh, we're struggling with revenues on the water side.
Well, one of our big users, you know, left us. That's a, and of course, with the rate study, whatever, a lot of people probably changed their type of usage in themselves, and we've had a dry year.
What year?
What year?
What year?
Yeah.
But there's less watering this year, I think, than last.
You know, and all those things have a part in it, you know, and, um, so, uh.
But would we say that because we took an average this year of a few months, that that made a bigger impact than what we thought?
Well, the average is not affecting your water fund.
We, we made more money this year doing it this way, right?
Your water fund was not changed, it's your sewer, that was impacted by the average. The sewer is actually tracking okay, um, and that's just because of rate increases, we did those rate increases. Um, and that, but that sewer average is negatively impacting a handful of people too.
Sure.
You might've heard from them, from them. Our, our water issue is because of just, there's just no usage.
So do we know in our program how they're gonna look at this from St. Cloud, as to how often they may increase our rate?
Yeah, we do know.
Yeah.
Yep, we get a budget.
So it's every so many years, or?
So like on our sewer side. So like on our sewer side, um, I have it in there, what we're projecting, so.
I jumped a little bit, I'm sorry. We went to sewer, we're talking water, that's my fault.
Yeah, yeah, okay, would you want me to talk about that now or do you want me to?
We can go backwards, yeah, yeah.
Um, so with the sewer, um, we have those, you said the regional capital, and then you have the treatment fees. So those are set based on the rates of St. Cloud, and so what, Mark and I look at our flows, and our flow is actually a little bit lower. So we were able to kinda tone that down a little bit, um, and based on the proposed rate. So I have it broken down, it's in, there's like six charges, um, and then I, we go on and put our flows and we can, we can get it pretty dang close. Um, obviously, we're gonna have those rain influx events and stuff like that, but the good news with the rain stuff, it's not as strong. So we get charged for the strength and the rain stuff isn't adding extra, you know, strength or, what do I call it?
Strength.
Yeah, I mean, um, but so those are all built in, and then you have, um, the one thing I'm still working on is the depreciation. Because we, we haven't co- completely closed the project out, so I don't have all those final numbers, cause the auditors and I kinda did part of it, but not all of it. Um, so, but that's a non-cash, um, but that's just good for you to know in your operating what your depreciation expense is, so that you know what kind of capital in the future is coming.
So we have a pretty good hands-on to follow this, so we know what we have to do if there's to be any increase.
Yeah.
On the sewer?
Yes.
Yes, they do very good.
Need a little more data, we need.
Well, for your stuff, for our side.
Yeah, yeah, for my side, I need a little more like dioxide and things like that, and I want aiming it downward, learning.
So chemicals could be a little influx, but.
Chemicals, um, internet, things like that, you know, monitoring things.
Well, and utility rate, like the pumping exp- expense, you know, we, uh, like, when we send it, you know, and when that's kind of gonna fluctuate a little bit. Um, but the good news is it flows downhill. Um, you know, it's, it hasn't been too crazy, I don't think, the pumping expense.
Doesn't make a difference what time we, time we send it or anything, does that make a difference?
No, right now it wouldn't make.
Whether it's day or the evening?
No, no.
Okay, doesn't make a difference.
Right now, since June eleventh, we've been standing steady, so.
But I mean, I, I feel pretty confident in our charge numbers and stuff, um, you know, less rain events, we can't always control that, but, um.
Right.
No, and they, St. Cloud is very good about giving us detailed spreadsheets, and we have meetings about it, um, you know, they explain it all. If you have questions, they'll calcu- you know, they're, they're good about that.
Okay, and then we put in here a small increase per the rate study?
On the sewer and on the water.
But the water, we didn't go as big though.
We didn't, well, wasn't it twenty-five, thirty-five, or thirty-five to twenty-five?
I think it was like thirty-five percent.
No, um, it's minimal. Um, I did, if you saw on the fee sc- oh, I have it up here, since we're on water, and so let's talk about that. Um, so, you'll see one of the projects on the enterprise was the, um, why aren't you moving now? Was the, um, meters, we wanna keep going with the meters.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know why it's frozen. I had proposed we could charge a tier, or we could charge like a flat meter fee for additional water revenue. We think we'll make, we think the, the revenue would be more stable with the flat fee, we'd know what we're coming. We don't, our best guess on the tier is it'll make less money than the flat two dollar per month fee. Um, and the flat two dollar per month fee would be, would work out to pay for that meter in about thirteen years for that residential.
What's the lifetime of a meter, twenty?
Well, we said twenty, I'd figure fifteen, probably.
Okay.
It's like thirteen point seven years or something it pays for itself.
So basically, just pays for itself too.
So, you, you have a justifiable charge there with a meter fee, because we're gonna be putting in new meters for everybody.
Yeah.
Um, my comments from the billers, like, uh, Stacy and Sarah were, you know, it's easier for people to follow those fees, what they are for. He said, it, sometimes those calculations just get difficult for people to understand. Um, that's up to you, I just, that was one of the proposals in there, do you have the fee schedule?
Uh, yeah.
I, I, I just can't get mine to, it's frozen, I don't know why it's frozen.
Mine is in my bag.
Yeah.
Well, I have it here too, but.
What?
It was in the first packet, I think you have.
Where is it in the first packet, that's, that's in my bag. Do you have, uh, Council on Deck, do you have, um?
Water.
Water, with the water increases, is that to be?
Uh, water.
Again?
There, I'll pull it up, I'll just, I don't know why, it just doesn't make me. I had it open. It was five percent, I thought. Three or five?
I thought it was five.
I probably did five, because three on that low, it doesn't do that much, I think it's five.
I was gonna say, I think it was five, and. I was concerned with it only being, only being five.
Meter per, was it ten percent increase?
What was that?
Ten percent.
So that was if you did the tier.
That's, that was the.
Here it is, sorry.
Versus if the two dollars flat.
The water rate's going up to eighty-four cents per hundred.
Right.
Um, but then the ninety-six cents is if you wanna do the tier or do the two dollar a month fee to all accounts. I'm just throwing options out, and that would be, so it's a ten percent plus a fifteen if you wanna do the tier.
So it's a ten percent increase?
It is a ten.
Okay, yeah.
The, the sewer must be the three, yep.
The lower.
I, I'm sorry, I got too many numbers in my hand.
Nope, that's good, um, I mean, based off the study, uh, you know, I'll play devil's advocate, we have. Constituents, uh, not happy with the water or the quality of water, um, but on the opposite end, uh, don't wanna, don't wanna have the added expense of. Doing it right by adding a treatment, a water treatment facility plant. Um, you can't have the best of both worlds, so, you know. That to me is the single biggest challenge. And I think to make sure everyone's on the same page, especially those watching, the, the water bill is not expensive. The sewer bill is, is the large rate, that is the largest percentage of the bill, because we built a new, well.
Thirty million dollars.
We didn't build the facility.
Yeah.
We are, um, sending it to St. Cloud, right? And that's also why, for the better part of twenty years, we did not grow this city, because we had a building moratorium and we could not. And so I think that, I wanna make sure that everyone's clear on that. When we're talking about water, that is the water treatment facility plant, we know that we need a new well, we know that the water tower needs rehab. We know that we probably need a, a ground tower, uh, as, or as well as then the treatment facility plant, you know. Approximately fourteen, fifteen, sixteen million dollars, right?
Yeah.
Depending on when we build it.
Right.
Um, now I know we're trying to get money for that through state and federal.
Yeah, so we, we did move forward on the federal, we got picked up by three of them, which was pretty good. But, um, the last I heard was maybe two million, which isn't enough.
No. We were hoping for half.
To what, twenty-seven?
Yeah, we, we requested half and didn't say that, we said the project wouldn't be feasible with less than half.
Yeah, right. So. I mean, I don't know, so when we talk about this rate study, and they took into the, they took into consideration that if we were to do this project, I think they said what, twenty-eight? Maybe twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Yeah, maybe put in there.
Um, right? In order for us to budget effectively and actually work towards that, without it being a rip the band-aid moment off like we did with sewer, then we need to start increasing that now. You know. As painful as that may sound, I, I mean, I, I know we need to, I know we wanna try to be mindful in, in everything else, but at the same time, we know we need to build it. And it's gonna cost money. And those, uh, calculations, those projections they put together, that was assuming that we would have half of it covered by state or federal dollars.
That was assuming seven million would come in.
Right, so, you know.
Because we did, well, at, at the staff level, we, we talked about it, and we just, we just couldn't foresee us taking out another twelve million in debt.
Right, well, yeah.
We just didn't think it was feasible.
No one wants to, but then at the same time, everyone has to understand or be okay with, whatever our situation with water is today, is gonna be what it is until. Everyone's ready to spend fourteen million dollars to fix it. I mean, it's, it's, it's as simple as that, there is no, there is no other way.
And I don't know of any other programs or anything besides federal, state appropriation, and federal appropriation's probably gonna be the, the best, you know, chance to get some significant money. Cause I, the most we've been able to get from the state, you know, a couple million. And they're not in any good budget situation either, so.
Remind me of our situation with the water treatment facility plant, I mean, what does our timeline look like from a, you know, need to do it?
Oh, have you take that one?
I mean, is there like, are we on, are we on the clock, like, in five years, like, we gotta make a decision to do it or not do it, or?
I'd like to see it here in five years, but we need funding, else you can't put it on all the residents.
And it'd be more economically feasible to do it all at once, right? The, the well and the, and the station and the ground tower, or, or does that matter?
The expensive part is the treatment.
Is the treatment.
Yeah.
So we could start.
The well and the storage tank isn't that much.
Yeah, those were.
Couple million?
No, not even.
Not even?
I mean, would that help at all, anything, with our water situation?
Not with the brown.
Our daily supply.
Not with the brown, the treatment, the treatment planters.
Yeah.
Iron, it's iron.
The iron and the, you know.
Iron, magnesium.
Magn- yeah, there we go, the magnesium and everything, that needs to be cleaned out.
And that well is what has high iron.
Yes.
Which well?
Five.
Five, which is the one that's out there.
West atone.
Tons of water, lots of iron.
And that's where six would go?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and, but the, the positive of that location is we have not had a PFAS detection out there at all.
Right, yeah.
Which is a big plus.
Or other ones that we've had hits?
Yeah.
Do we have a, uh, end of life on, what would it be, well, three? That, that we're worried about, that we need to get, thinking about well six sooner rather than later, beyond or besides the treatment plant?
We'll never get any funding from the PFAS that's in that well, right? It's minimal enough, it's minimal enough, yeah.
Nope, they're gonna shut it down. They're gonna shut it down and make us do six before they do anything to treat that well.
Yeah, well.
That's basically what they told us, I think, at the last.
Well, will we get funding, shut three down?
I don't think it's high enough.
That would be on our dime, if we had to shut three down and do a new six, unless, yeah.
Cause it'd be simultaneous, we'd shut down three and open six.
Probably, you'd probably just piggyback it off that project, yeah.
Right. I mean, is there, is, is that something we need to do sooner rather than later? I mean, if we had, if we said, okay, we can, we can wait on the treatment plan for five years, or whatever, four years. I mean, do we need to get the well in sooner than that, or is that, can that wait?
I, they didn't seem to be too alarmed of what we're doing.
Yeah, no, we only use three casually, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
You know, sometimes if they put a standard in place, and then, then you, you, well, what are you gonna help us to fund this then?
Right.
You know, and that's.
The magnesium, we had to send that letter, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
They lowered, we were fine for umpteen years, they lowered the standard, then we're not in compliance, or whatever the word is.
Right, we, we can't control that.
Well, it's not, it's an advisory.
Right.
It's not a, it's just an advisory.
Sure.
With, uh, getting appropriate funding, twenty-eight, twenty-nine look feasible to do this?
If we can find funding.
If we happen to get half.
I say, we can't do another twelve million.
So, I did sit on a call with Emmer's office, was it a month or two, maybe six weeks ago, and like asked where those appropriations were. And they thought they would still get some appropriations for that stuff going, but there's so much that has changed down there, I, I haven't heard anything since, so I don't think it's looking that great. Um, I don't know that we're gonna have a good idea for another year or two, just how things all settle out with all the other major changes.
Well, wasn't it last year, they didn't appropriate any funding for any of this?
No.
Yeah.
So they're like backed up a couple of years already, and then, you know, just everything else that's changed.
We almost had to anticipate, uh, when appropriations come, you know, you, you, if I happen to not be here a few years from now or whatever, that. Someone has it on their radar, that as soon as someone's available to pay for half that project, it's a, that's a go.
Well, and I think we would come, I think if we got the appropriation, we'd come running to this council, like, we need to do this now.
Yeah, right.
You know, even if we were behind on rates, I think we would say, look at this, we need to, you know.
Right.
And we might have to make some decisions.
The longer we wait, the longer it takes, the more it's gonna cost.
The more it's gonna cost anyways.
Uh, I, they do like our project though, um, they do like the critical infrastructure project, um, you know, water's important, everybody needs water.
Yeah. You were saying, Councilman Gundek?
Uh, I, I, do we? The way I look at it, okay, we should be putting money away for this, for the future.
Yeah, we should.
To go above and beyond it a little bit more, even if we don't know what our timeframe is. No one's gonna like an increase, but I think we have to do it, it's.
The only other option is we put a filtering system in every home.
I mean, the incre- the increase is gonna happen.
Yep.
You know, once a project actually moves, it's just a matter of how noticeable of an impact are we gonna have, right? If we did small increases now.
Right.
Then a really large one when it comes time for everything to, right, be settled. Or, we'll say medium increases, and then it's still, yeah, it might be a large bump, but at least it isn't, it isn't gonna be as large as maybe the year prior, right? I mean, or, right, it's.
There were some water samples sent down to the state, weren't there? If I remember right, the guy, uh, that I talked to out there was running the.
Oh.
The mock system, that.
John Thon?
Yeah.
From SEH?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Or he recommended that we should send it to him, cause you look at that, be plus, I mean, that, that was bad.
Okay, well. I don't know, you know, we know that it has to, it's gonna happen, it has to.
But you're basically got some paperwork in it now, don't you?
I've applied the last few years, yeah, um, and will keep applying, and like I said, that's where it's, like, Emmer picked it up, Cole Bishar and Smith all picked up our project.
Did we have, uh, SEH do design work yet?
No.
No, okay, we're waiting on appropriations first.
We want appropriations first, they can, how many, they could do it pretty quick, actually, for like four months or something?
Yeah, it's really quick.
Yeah, um, and the thing too is like we, with the design work, even if we, with appropriations, we still, we would have cash on hand that we could handle that portion.
Sure, yeah. We would wanna make sure that we're actually moving forward with the project.
I wouldn't recommend doing the design until we know.
Until we know, right.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So we're okay on sewer revenues, which is good, I, I mean, we're, we're at least trending in the right space.
Yeah, and I would anticipate we would do this last increase, and then we'd hold on sewer for a while, and then maybe that's when, if you do need to make adjustments on the water side.
Make adjustments on the water then?
You have a little bit of a window.
Yeah, that's a good call, I mean, I'm fine with the ten percent, uh, I, I think it's, I think we have to, uh, in order to plan appropriately for the future. And ten percent on the water sounds like a lot, but it's, it's not, cause what are we currently at, like a sixty-nine cents per?
Are we still gonna do the April way to July?
I have not, I, I, I had not proposed any changes to that unless you told us to.
Then we'd stick with just a two dollar a month meter fee.
I think, I think that sounds.
So would you rather just do the sewer, the top one, and then the two dollar? Okay.
I think the two, I think just to keep it simple and for everyone to understand what it's for. Cause what are we at, seventy-five cents?
It would talk to be seventy-some bucks, cause there isn't gonna be an increase in the test fee too, but that's by the state, we don't have a control over that. It's gonna work out to be seventy-one, seventy-two or something a month, I think is what we figured.
But our proposal is raising the water to eighty-four cents per one hundred gallons.
Correct.
And we're at like seventy-five?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, yeah, so I mean, it's. Yeah, I mean, it's not, ten percent sounds worse than it is, but it does add, I mean, overall, ten percent of the, you know, the minimum.
It's because it's a lower rate, the sewer, five and ten percent hits a lot harder.
Correct, correct, correct.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's two dollars and change or whatever, right, you know, for sewer.
But there will be, just so you are where the, the test fee is going up, but the state sets that, we don't have a choice, it's like tax.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course.
Like, like anything.
And they did a really good job of setting it, so it works out to be an odd number, you can't divide it by twelve, trust me, it was, it's maddening. Trust me, it was, it's maddening.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else on sewer and/or water?
Do we go through a lot of bulk water mark? Um, I don't know what our numbers is, the ounce of meters broke right now, so everyone, I, they're still writing it down. I don't know, I'd have to check and monitor, I mean, I don't think it's overly.
We haven't changed that fee in a while.
No, a couple years, two or three.
Couple years, a couple of years ago we did. Yeah, it was about.
We kinda went back and forth on that for a while.
Yep.
Was it above fifty now? And we only bill that a couple times a year, so.
Okay, I mean, how much?
They pay more than the residents do.
Oh, yeah, they do, it's almost, it's almost double. What's the revenue again on that one?
That's just, it's just lumped into the, it's not that much.
I'll say it can't be that much.
No. I think that we raised the minimum now to what, like thirty or forty, it used to be twenty, and we're like, okay, look, we need to charge a flatter, or we, I mean.
Thirty dollar minimum billing, so.
Well, and like, there may be a lot of bulk wat- but sometimes it's our own projects that we're using the water too, and that's not charged necessarily, cause it's our project.
Oh, sure. Right. Yeah, okay. All right.
How are we doing on, uh, late payments on the water? Are we caught up on those, or water and sewer, or we still have?
You mean delinquencies?
Yeah.
Haven't heard anything.
Sarah, blink, do you know how a delinquent, have you looked at a delinquent report?
Not recently, no.
And then we'll be, we'll do another shut-off there.
We definitely do one here in the next month or so, cause we wanna get one in before two.
I can't say we ran that recently.
Okay.
Whenever I've looked at it, it's one of them, it's like.
So we have the same problem with the same people.
A lot of it is, cause everybody.
Yeah.
Um, I, just on the water, though, and sewer, the mail has been atrocious. Um, we had, somebody took fourteen days from when they dropped it off at the post office to get to us. And we are encouraging people to sign up for auto pay or come and drop it directly in our box, because things are getting clogged up down at the sorting facility, and it's been a bear. And we've even had that issue with some of our AP, like, payments and stuff. Like, they're postmarked, but they don't get there for two weeks.
Correct.
And they're just going to the cities sometimes, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
So if you do talk to anybody, encourage them, if they're gonna drop, don't drop it off at the post office, just come and drop it in our box here.
Yeah. Or auto pay.
Or auto pay.
Okay.
Downtown? EDA downtown, Herbst?
Well, we agreed to renew our facade program.
Yep, that's in there.
Yeah.
We already have what? Five, if? If that rude gem's building, if, if they do their full project, we're already into this, about five thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, we're into it, yep. Yeah, and he did sign the, yeah, he's good with that reimbursement at the first of the year. Um, and so the big thing, the big expense on this one is the facade and then the, um, contract for deed payment for the land. And then we only have, I think we have like two years left on the silt sock contract for deeds, so just keep in mind in a couple years, that is going to drop off. I think it's, I think his last payment's like the beginning of twenty-eight, I think, yeah. So just remember that's gonna.
That'll go.
That revenue will come off.
There's a. Good conversation, I thought, around the downtown revitalization. We will, we're gonna hit a point where there's maybe not any more facades to do, or, or just no one's gonna take advantage of it, right?
I would say we are.
I mean, I, we gotta be, we gotta be getting close. I mean, I could, I could see us maybe doing a few projects, you know, right, uh, this year yet, um, or next year, rather. My thought around, you know, the one thing we don't have is we don't have, uh, an EDA fund. You know, so when it would come time, if the EDA wanted to purchase land, real estate, we don't have the money today, but do we think about, um, keeping that twenty thousand dollars going, but putting it into a, a different fund? Am I saying that right, Sarah, right?
Yeah, you would basically wanna levy so that you, um, have cash available for, you know, if you had a couple hundred thousand in a fund and you wanted to buy a property or some, you know.
Yeah, if there's opportunity, that really made sense, or heck, even if, you know, expanding this building, right? If the lottery map becomes available, or, or the building next door. I mean, that gives us opportunity, you know, if we had a couple hundred thousand dollars, right, and there, that, we're just paying cash, then it's done deal. Right, it's already one you've appropriated.
And the Herbst, you know, eventually we have, we're in the first five year, then we have an option to buy another five year. That would eventually, once we pay for that land, would eventually stop too.
Sure.
So you could keep some of those funds.
Keep some of those funds, and actually start building a little bit, you know, as we, as we think about big picture here, right? You know, not tomorrow, but years from now, when opportunities arise, um, that allows for us to control the narrative a little bit more, or whatever that future council might be doing.
Well, that should help a little bit, now that we got working sources to.
Well, right, well.
To open up, to open up.
No, we can actually build.
The doors out there.
Yeah. Okay, any more on EDA downtown Herbst? All right, swimming pool, making some money.
Well, Mark, do you wanna talk about the gold-plated filters now, or later?
They just gold, I mean, I thought they were.
Well, I, I think they're gonna be gold-plated, the price you threw at me.
So we have, uh, so we're anticipating some increase in, uh, revenue, uh, for twenty-six swimming lessons?
Yep, um, we, we haven't, um, increased in swimming lesson fees in a couple years.
Okay.
Um, I was not planning on doing the admission, unless the council had a different thought.
Well, are we making more money on swimming lessons, or on admissions?
We make more money on swimming lessons.
I see, I didn't increase swimming lessons.
Um, part of the swimming lesson strategy too is though we really push group lessons. We get a lot of requests for individual, we don't make as much money on those, so, um, that's also the more, why we did another session this year of swimming. Cause group lessons are what we make money on.
Okay.
And it's been good, I think the pool's done pretty decent considering how much it's raining, it, it's been doing okay.
Okay.
I haven't heard a whole lot of complaining.
We got a good staff.
Amongst that.
We got a really good staff down there.
The, I've been there the most this year than any other year.
Yep.
And all has been good.
You had some big maintenance coming up though, right, Mark?
Yeah, that's what he.
So, well, that's not in expenses, though, that's in capital improvement, right?
Yep.
Anything else to be, I don't think there's anything really else that was concerning about expenses?
Uh, we probably didn't mention this, but there is some public work salary in the pool, too.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, so, oh, yeah, sure, oh, salaries.
Because they have to get it ready.
The salary in general is, is when we pay the lifeguards as well as that.
I mean, the majority of it. Yep, but they do have prep to get it ready, and, you know, maintain it and stuff, but it's.
How long do they do the swimming lessons from?
So it's two weeks, so ten days total.
Okay.
Um, you get two rain days.
So this is as soon as they open up, right?
Like, yeah, we, we op- we start the week after we open, with swimming, so four two-week sessions is what we did this year. Is that what your question is?
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, when and how long they.
Yeah, we always take the week of the fourth off, cause it's always a terrible week to get people. Um, but, yeah, they just group them in, it's either the first week right after we open, or the second week, depending on how the schedule is. And it's two, 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 and then we added another two in August.
So I take it they're early morning, so it doesn't conflict with.
And afternoon.
And afternoon.
The open swimming lessons.
And afternoon.
They normally go nine until noon, I believe, and then four-thirty to six-thirty or something?
Yeah.
I don't get down there in the afternoon. Or six fifteen, maybe?
Yeah.
When they open up at six-thirty?
Yep.
And they just go one week?
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yep.
And we open what day? What I'm looking at is.
Do you first Wednesday of the month?
Maybe they could do this and have it done before they actually open up the pool?
Swimming lessons?
Yeah.
That water is way too cold early in the season.
I, yeah, I, I don't know, you know.
Well, we can't get the staffing.
Right.
We need the kids out of school to teach them.
So where we're at now, is we're lucky to get them to.
Yeah, and, and this year, just so you all know, we're op- staying open a lot later this year than we normally do.
Normally they're heading to school, no?
Bec- well, because we were able to find enough staff, and so when Mark and I, we chatted about it, and we're like, well, let's keep it open then as long as possible. There's one day next week, we couldn't get enough staff that we have to close, but.
Unless it's weather tanks.
Yep.
You know, we might reconsider our decision, but.
But we had such a big staff this year, and so we were able to.
That's good, that's good.
So do we have a closing date yet?
It's.
August thirty-first.
It's next Friday, right?
March eight, it's Wednesday, it's the thirty-first.
August thirty-first is it, right now?
Oh, it's a week from, oh, the Sunday, yeah, that's right.
But if it's weather tanks, we might revisit, you know, if it's long term, we're talking sixty-nine for a high for a couple days, so.
Yeah, okay.
Can't get everybody there anyhow.
But there's been times we've been closing at the twentieth, because we can't get people, so.
And the expense for the capital outlay, that's just us for the CIP?
So that's funding the CIP, and as you see, I have a note there, this is being underfunded. Because if you look at your CIP and what's on there, um, we also have this big, what I call the big bad pool basin coming up. Um, basically the bowl, which we think still got some life to it. But essentially, we just, we wanna make sure you're aware that we have to do these pool filters, and then we have to do that basin at some point. I, I don't know if it'll be in twenty-eight, that's why we just kept it. Do you guys have your CIP?
I have it, yeah.
Um, and then if you look at pool cash, you know, we're at two sixty-eight, those filters are gonna take a hit. We don't have enough money to do the pool bowl right now. You know, and.
For the filters?
The bowl's gonna get pushed.
The bowl's gonna get pushed, because we should really be funding that CIP closer to fifty-five thousand a year. And we've been underfunding it for a few years now. So.
And pool basin is like, what, a once every twenty years?
Fifty.
Yeah, it's a.
Whatever, I mean, maybe it'll be more, but it's, it's really never been done.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's been holding up very well the last, we've, a few things that have changed, how we, you know, pressure out the cement they use for patching, and the, uh, I hate to say it, it's.
We're gonna hold it as long as we can.
Yeah.
Um, and we did the coping, and that was supposed to help.
The coping helped a lot doing that, you guys, yeah, hundred fifty thousand, whatever it was in that. And it kept the water from getting down in there, popping it.
Okay.
So the filters on these were, what changed on them? What's that?
I just think filters shouldn't be that expensive.
They're just end of life, you can't get parts no more. We've eBayed, we've.
Well, how old are they? Tell me how old these?
Figure early eighties.
Yeah.
So when they did the cement, they wrote in the cement, and the people did.
Oh, funny.
So they're not like they're something you change, like your furnace filter, I'm serious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's been a while, you said it's been a while since we replaced them.
I think early eighties.
Forty-some years?
I think early eighties. The one thing that's not here, and I don't know why. I can't remember what I was planning, we do have to probably do, um, drain covers this year, I believe. It's not big money, but it's gonna be, they're, they're, the ten thousand, I don't, I, I can't update and tell you a number, but that Virginia Graham acre, wow, our fifteen years is up, I think, this year.
Oh.
Yeah. And that's something to wanna mess with, that's back in the news again, so you know, it's, they're.
Yeah, sure.
They're playing with that log in, so we need to adhere to what's.
So I would, I guess at the end of the day, I would, we probably do need to look at some of the fee revenue and, and keep working that, cause our wages go up, or.
Yeah.
You know, heating goes up, everything.
Oh, we're not making a lot of money, no, we should be able to make a little bit for repairs.
I mean, we jumped the fees for the swimming lessons this year, right? It went up, no? We haven't for two years. Okay. We just did the regular admission last one, we won a buck each. Yeah. So, it, it, we try to kinda alternate it.
I don't know, I mean, it sucks to pay more, but I'm all about if we need to raise the fees for swimming lessons, since that's where I make the money, to offset the pool filters.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would say we do a buck or two, you know, buck on the, the shorter one, two on the other one.
Yeah, because, like, I feel like I, we would pay eighty-five for lessons for two weeks. They're good lessons, it's small class sizes, it's in our backyard.
Well, and I think we compared to, I know, um, Emma and I did some checking a year or two ago, and, um, we're not out of line.
No.
What we charge, like, but you get Jack Splash, some of those, I mean, you're paying.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And like you said, it is convenient.
Yeah.
Do we know what Maura pays or charges for anything?
I don't remember after, I, I just know we were not aligned what we were doing.
I mean, that'd be a comparable.
You want me to look it up?
A comparable pool, you know, they're a little bit bigger, but.
Well, Jeff and I, Jeff pre-ramp manages theirs, he, him and I are always emailing every year about what we're paying our people, or.
Sure.
And I think we're pretty comparable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, compared to like Jack Splash, or there's another one that opened in Sartell, and it's five, I think ten-minute lessons or fifteen-minute lessons, and it's a hundred and ten dollars a week.
And then you gotta drive there if you're, you know.
Yeah. No, I think, I think we have a pretty fair.
Yeah, we'd be willing to pay more for swimming lessons.
Are we okay, though, then keeping the admission, or do you?
What, do we have four and five, right now?
Five and six.
So five kids, six adults?
Yep.
We just did that.
Last year?
Last year.
Yeah, we had a whole year result.
We didn't raise it this year, it was, yeah, so this would, that's why we kinda try to alternate when we.
I would, I would be okay keeping that going another year. Uh, keep, keeping that going another year, but then raising the swimming lessons.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we alternate every other year, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just see where we're at for swimming and go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Um, let's see, uh, swimming pool. Fire. Right, am I right on that? I'm going to fire next? Yes. I mean, looks pretty clean.
Two minor changes.
Right. Zero, zero percent change overall.
No, that's not, is it? Oh, yeah, it is, but our revenues went up to.
Yeah, revenues, revenues went up ten and.
We adjusted our contracts a little bit, cause we're under, under.
I mean, yeah, there's some fluctuations in there, but at the end of the day, there's a, I mean, no one's just staying steady. I can't, I can't complain about that.
All, all soon you wanna replace that pro?
We haven't got a CIP yet.
We've been putting that off. We've been putting that off. Yes.
So, we're, is it, am I reading this right? We're doing a ninety thousand dollar capital outlay for the budget? But it should be a hundred, I'm gonna call it a hundred and fifteen?
So, if you go to your CIP to that far right number.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking, I must've put an order in there. Yeah, one fourteen is what it's calling for.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's a possibility of us looking at.
But you have that fire truck, that payback.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Um, so essentially, they're trying to replenish their cash. Um, is that the last year? Is this the last year? I think it is.
Yeah.
So, then, if you were to maintain that, you would essentially then fund your CIP.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We should be done with the rest of your talk, but we kept that there to fund money into the.
You had to refund your back and your.
The tanker.
Yeah. You took cash that you wanted replenished.
All right, any other questions on fire? All right, I would like to, uh, I don't know if I need to make a motion for a recess, but I would like to make a motion for a recess.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need to announce the time or anything?
No.
Okay.
Six fifty-four, Sarah.
Maybe just whatever. Five, five minutes, I don't know. Yeah.
Sure.
See, the guys are still working on the streets right now.
With the caffeine packet?
Nope, nope.
I had to do that in jury duty yesterday. When you sit for so long.
All right, so, we will resume meeting where we left off, we just finished with fire fund. Uh, moving into, do we wanna talk about the, the levy increase as it is?
Yeah.
In our capital, our CIP will help dictate or lower that or, or raise it if we need to, right?
Yes, so you essentially had a minimum on your CIP, we're having to fund projects or keep it at a certain level, so we can cover what's scheduled. Generally speaking, our CIP is underfunded.
Sure.
Um, so, I, I caution you, when we do start hacking those levies, we're also hurting ourselves in subsequent years.
Right.
So. And then we can't touch the bond funds.
Okay. Uh, so, we're at, if, if we did nothing else today, we're at seven point nine five percent?
Correct.
What were we at last year? Was it?
Five?
Four or five? I thought we cut it in half the year, from the year prior.
It was lower.
Four, eight, nine, something.
Yeah, I think it was like four and a half.
Four, eight, two, I think.
Who, like nine percent the, in twenty-three? I think we got it cut in half for twenty, or sorry, twenty-four, cut in half for this year. And now we're creeping back up.
Yep. And I think we'll, you know, we're okay, just a couple of things, like, we do not have the health insurance number, um.
Expected to go up.
Yeah.
Some of them are really high, but I, we did talk to the agent, you know, and he's, he's thinking if it just were to stay the same. You know, ten percent on average is what they're seeing, you know, around that. Um, but we also may have to, like, change our deductibles and stuff, so that, you know, we'll have to see what that all comes out to, but he said. They do not, they have everything submitted, but the state has to release it, and that's not gonna happen till October, so. We have ten percent, I think, in there as a cushion, and then we have our other insurance. Um, you know, we make the projections, and, and if we don't get it right, we have to, you know, adjust for our next year is what we have to do. Um, and then you also have the new paid family leave that's built in.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a doozy.
It's a doozy when you're a service-heavy.
Yeah.
Organization.
Workers' comp, or are we waiting on that too, as far as insurances go?
Workers' comp, um, we have numbers on that, and that, like I said, that kinda, um, is where we compare those wages to where everybody works. So, no, that should be fine. Um, property, I'm still waiting on property to come back. Um, I know we're gonna get hit with our appraisals on some of our buildings, but, um, I've already talked to the league, and I said, give me some different deductible options. Um, so we might have to look at, um, instead of running those lower deductibles, which we have, we might have to look at a higher, um, deductible, and kind of, based on some of the claims we've had, like. There's certain things, they're not even worth turning in anymore anyways, so, we're gonna reevaluate that. So, I think we'll be okay there, um, we already kinda planned, we're gonna have to make some changes.
Do you wanna run through the CIP quick?
Sure.
You know, just. When I look, when I'm looking at twenty-five and looking at twenty-six, um, you know, and not, twenty-five, I know is not over yet. But, you know, for example, we budgeted ten thousand dollars for this year for Holdridge Park Shelter improvements. Did we do ten thousand dollars in Holdridge Park Shelter improvements?
We have not yet.
You know, or Norway, or Norway Drive, Scout House improvements, I'm just wondering, you know, when, when we budgeted for these things, if we haven't done them. Do they just carry over to twenty-six, and we've already budgeted the funds for it, right, and?
Yeah, so.
And so, when we do those things, we get to take from those funds?
When we carry it over, yep, so we would move it over to the next line, and then what we do is we look at, um, what we plan to spend, any variations. That's why you have the starting fund, the new expenditures, we look at that, and then we would just plan, if we budgeted for it already, it would already be, there'd be funds essentially in there. But we gotta look at the overall CIP too, sometimes things come over budget, sometimes we, you know, we lose ground on some of those things, prices go up.
Okay. You know, we got, well, we got the microphones, we got that, you know, figured out. Tablets are still on the twenty-five.
Yep.
CIP. You're doing the renovations, okay. For. City, so, if we look at twenty-six, just on this first page, City Hall server.
That has to get done.
Has to get done.
There is no way around it, we are barely surviving.
Yep, website redesign, that's like a legal thing.
So.
For by twenty-twenty-seven, it needs to be ready to go.
Um, it, yes, there is an ADA accessibility requirement, we do not wanna spend five thousand meeting that, you know, and redoing our site, we're gonna just get a new site.
Well, we've been kinda putting that off the last year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and actually, uh, Sarah got a good proposal where it spreads it out, which I think's just easier to manage that way, too.
Okay.
We did the squad already.
Squad, we already just pulled ahead, all right. Uh, twenty-six.
You're on streets now?
It looks like it's.
They had the chipper for.
The chipper on the bottom, did you see that?
No, that was the colonies, correct? Uh, fifty percent gold.
Okay.
It's coming, coming in the light for major repairs, and they wanna opt out of it, so.
So, they're buying the new one then?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're going half with the money?
No, we're going our own way, it's just, it'll be more, it's more feasible and something like that.
Okay.
So, when does everybody chip when it doesn't snow? When does everybody chip after a storm?
Right.
You know, it's just, it's a good idea, but it's not, you know.
And so, this would be buying a chipper for ourselves?
That is ours.
Okay.
So, we're looking used?
No, looking at a new one.
No, no. Okay. Did you buy your tractor?
We have not yet, I wanna buy a lawnmower first, and we have not been able to get a, one to try out, but they assured us we would have one this month. We didn't do anything in the, extra in the month of June, you know, with everything else going on.
Okay.
So.
So, you haven't got the mower yet, haven't got the tractor yet.
Correct.
Budgeted for it, so we're good there, next year, we're looking at the chipper.
Just the chipper.
Okay.
We moved a couple of things over, 'cause that was added on, so then we know when we move trucks to the right, 'cause.
So, the chipper's twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Okay. You know, score funds for that, we can get you score funds?
Okay. So, on the bottom of that same page, Sarah, the change in equipment fund. We're running, is that an overage for twenty-six, but, uh, and a deficit?
So.
Over the next several years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Um, we had a couple of things that, uh, went over, um, in the past, the shed, um, there was something else, too. So, yeah, we had a little bit of a fluctuation there, but that's why we look at it every year, what the fund level's at, what we haven't spent yet, and then, that's why you do that, adjustments. Uh, you recalculate it every year.
Sure.
But you can see, what we do is we keep kicking.
Right.
Keep deferring and kicking, so that's why, and it, it may look, yeah, they may be stacked up here in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, well, more may kick, but maybe we see what the equipment's like at that point, before we kick it.
Okay. When we look up, then, at the streets plan. We have the seal coating nominal industrial park expansion, and that's only if.
Yep.
We get a, um, letter of intent.
Correct, we have to have a, a project to do that, I just keep it on there, so you know, I, we probably should look at that number if it's next year again. Um, but essentially, we'd have to come up with that. We'd apply for that deed.
Yeah, yeah. And so, one point eight would be on us, or would, or be half of that?
We'd be half of that, so if you look at the bottom, I think I have a deed grant.
Oh, yeah, I see, yeah.
Yep. And then I did put in there, just in case we get in a pickle or something, you know, that may be somewhere, I would look at maybe the expendable trust. Maybe borrow some cash if we need to, 'cause if we're gonna get a nine hundred thousand dollar grant, we're gonna find some money to, if, if that's what we intend to do. And then the other kinda change into the streets fund, just so you see, um, the franchise fee transfers. Those are basically, that, we're just receding that money into the streets CIP. Um, and that's the Excel and the central franchise fees, they're tracking a little higher than we projected, which is what we hoped. You know, we didn't, we didn't have a certain number until we got going, so, that's good, that's some additional revenue source for projects, critical infrastructure projects and that one. And then there is still some small city assists that comes in, but we are advised not to budget for it, because it's kinda hit or miss, we might get twenty thousand every couple of years. Um, but we put that into the streets fund as well, if we do get it. And you can do seal coating or something with it.
Now, for seal coating, Mark, is that, that forty thousand, what's that for the hole? Where would it be sealed coated? Wherever it needs it, or?
Forty's not gonna get much.
Right.
Oh, right, and I'm spending that on some other, you know, to, to make it worth, you almost have a hundred thousand, so.
Yeah, we're way under maintenance.
We just looked at a price of Penn, uh, Norman Avenue North and that whole north side, besides Penn Street to be done, and that's a hundred thousand to mill. And overlay that with the project, so we figured out what it costs.
Is that like where those little townhomes are?
From a, kind of a mid-nod garage.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that, and that's city versus like an HOA?
That's the actual Norman.
Or, or the actual Norman?
Yeah.
Okay.
From fourth, where the project quits to highway.
Okay.
Mill two layers and put two down, replace the bad curb is ninety-nine thousand.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's gonna happen.
Does that came from Kikley, or?
That's the bid price.
Bid price for?
We just took that. Aerial square footage.
Sure.
So, in doing that instead of seal coating, or that's just an addition?
That is something else that needs to be done, right?
I don't, you know, we're not even near the number, so I don't know how we're gonna even fit it in if we wanna write it off.
When's the last time we did a seal coat overlay?
Well, seal coat, uh, last year we did, or two years ago, last year, completed four south pine, Glenn.
Did Shaw, Presidential, right?
Four south pine, Penn Carpenter. Carpenter. That was like almost a hundred dollars in for the old streets.
Yeah, yeah, so forty isn't much.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, and I, like, we talked, I don't have a problem with lumping, we just can't spend a hundred, a hundred, a hundred unless we fund it, then we can fund it.
Right, 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 right.
You know, if you lump a few years together, that's not a good deal.
But I mean, just mo, uh, looking forward, you know, we have twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty thousand isn't much for that either, you know.
That's kinda close figure.
It's like a street.
Yeah, you know, Penn Street.
It's like a street that we can do with twenty thousand.
We should maybe look at a slurry on Penn Street, they make a slurry seal coat. You know, that's probably one of the heaviest traveled roads in town, you know.
Yeah.
I don't think we can afford to do a mill and overlay there, you know, if Norman's a hundred, that's gonna be pushing two, right?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
That's gonna, something else, maybe a slurry price we can get, you know, it's not a seal coat, they actually, Mid-Dot uses it, it's a mixture of whatever.
Okay.
Maybe get a price on that, just extend the life of the road another ten, fifteen years, ten years?
I was gonna say, well, it'll give you another ten.
Yeah.
I think ten on the high end, yeah. Okay. Well, I think the streets is a problem.
Drain tile, Mariah, we're gonna put that off another year. It looks.
Move to twenty-twenty-seven right now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Well, they might not get thirteenth, we don't know, you know, how it's gonna go, so. We might have to.
Like, they might push that into next season?
Well, it, it, they're just based on the project, hopefully, it doesn't rain much more, but if it continues to monsoon rains. You know, that's the piece that is kinda separate.
Sure.
That isn't dug up yet.
I, I wonder if there'd be opportunity, if they did have to kick it down to twenty-six, if we could do Mariah Drive and get, you know, the economies of scale or whatever? 'Cause they'd be doing the same thing in, on both roads then, right?
I think Mariah, we could go behind the curb, and they don't have much road restoration. I think, I gotta, although I don't know that, but there was too many small utilities behind.
On thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Okay.
I think, uh, Mariah wasn't as bad. Yeah, there's was no, everything buried there, that's why you had to go on the road on thirteenth. Hopefully, it doesn't pick.
Okay.
Possibility that.
Okay.
Is there seven there if that water is running?
I just don't want to, you know, for, if we need all this money to do proper overlay and seal coatings. I'd wanna wrap up some of these smaller things like Mariah Drive before we. Start putting in much more capital for overlay and seal coating. And then we have, what, twenty-eight, we have right now, what, Balsam, Birch and Elm?
Those are gonna be the.
They're not gonna happen in twenty-eight.
No.
Who's ever here, who's ever here?
We can't with our credit, our debt, they, they're basically told us.
Would that be a similar project like we're doing now, or that's just the road?
Oh, no, that'd be like a north side, that would be.
Okay, that'd be a nor, like a north side project, okay.
Like a big reconstruction.
I think we should do Hill before we do, you know, that's the last of our add.
The one that's scheduled for twenty-thirty?
Yeah, I don't know why we bumped that that far, I wonder why. Oh, I didn't catch that.
I don't know, I.
Maybe.
You tell me where they move, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm wondering why we did that.
Maybe, maybe the twenty-eight CIPs get moved to like twenty thirty-one?
I think my guess is Balsam, Birch, and they were supposed to all be at twenty thirty, because we usually don't issue, I usually say, you gotta have, give me at least five years in between bond cycles with this big a project.
Yeah.
Maybe Hill, we could fit in something, but.
So.
You're not gonna.
So, there's a possibility of, yeah, those three and twenty-eight to be moved to twenty thirty. And so on, but then Hill and, Hill and Badger might need to be moved up to like twenty-eight.
I, I still think that's a tough.
But. We have to, yeah, but we'd have to.
The bond for, I, I still, I would not recommend it, I would, I would, we do better when we do big projects. Um. We can see kind of the, you know, I gotta remember, we did a twenty-year cycle now, a twenty-year term, it's helpful when we can see the, we're this much through the cycle, when we, that we have a strategic plan to manage our debt.
I mean, if we go to twenty thirty with all those projects that we're at, you know, we're nearing, you know, nearing ten million dollars.
They're not all gonna happen in twenty thirty, you're gonna get to that point, and you're gonna see what, what are the worst ones, and you're gonna reprioritize again.
Okay. All right, anything else on streets, I guess I, I don't know. The only thing I would comment on is if they're doing work on that thirteenth avenue next year, what can we do with having Mariah Drive? But we'd have to, we'd have to budget for that now, though, right? In today, like today's CIP?
We should.
Yeah, I don't, well, put a question mark by it, 'cause I don't know where we'd cut eighty thousand dollars from somewhere else.
Right.
And I don't know if eighty is, is, you gotta take a look at what it is exactly.
We'd have to do some design and.
Yeah.
If we can go behind the curb, it's not gonna be eighty.
Yeah. Okay.
That eighty thousand gonna cover that?
Well, that's, I say, it depends on her and the road or behind the curb.
Yeah, and it could be less, but we don't, you know, it could be, it could be more. Okay. And then water, we're talking about the meters already. Right, is the water meters in here?
Yes.
Yeah.
One twenty-five.
And that would just be covered by the two dollar?
We'd pay the cash for it out of the, um, which you should tell them, which, we got some transmitters.
That's just a partial of them? That isn't all the meters, is it?
Well, we bought a bunch already.
We bought three hundred of our funds.
Yep.
And then we bought seventy-four transmitters at a city, North Metalhead, or.
And then we bought seventy-four transmitters at a city, North Metalhead, or Taylor, we're extra on the project.
At a discount.
Same thing, so we paid a.
Thirty bucks less a piece, right?
We paid one fifty, the current price one seventy, and they offered them up for one twenty, otherwise they're going back to the hill, so we bought them. So that bill will be actually hidden next month.
Okay.
Um, but no, that, that meters is, we have to do with the people that aren't under construction, we started over there, we need to do the whole town.
I didn't know if you're gonna change them all at one time.
That's still kind of just in discussion.
Twenty-one thousand to have them coming into it.
Hey, we've thought about it because it is, it's, it's really hard to coordinate, you gotta do evenings, weekends, it's really hard to coordinate with people.
No, it is, it's twenty-one thousand for them to come in.
Get it done, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
People just aren't as responsive anymore to things like that and.
And then the, uh, half ton truck, we already kicked that one down, didn't we? To this year, or is that?
We could, that one is, why it's in twenty, it could go to twenty-seven, is where, um, the only reason we would next year, if we would keep the truck for us, another truck, to like this summer, having a truck down or something. But that truck is, would make twenty-seven, that's a.
That's.
It's out of water, so it's not gonna affect our budget.
You're talking to pick up?
Yeah, what we're gonna do with budget.
So this doesn't have anything to do with like the levy, any of these funds?
Levy, no.
So we could move that to twenty-seven?
Yeah, but that won't affect our levy.
But it doesn't affect anything though.
Any kind of.
I mean, you can push it down, but it's not gonna affect the actual levy. I mean, same with water tower reconditioning, we're not doing that, I mean, assuming in twenty-six, or is that?
That's a question for.
But does that just come out of the water fund?
It comes out of water fund, yep.
We move it?
So, so that's where you have to charge rates accordingly to pay for these things.
Sure.
That's why the water sewer rates go up.
I think we should do another, I don't wanna say a dive or a inspection, interior inspection. And have a look at it again, maybe we only have to do an exterior and just repaint it again.
What's an inspection cost?
So this water tower reconditioning, is that for the in, internal?
I think that was a total refurb.
The, the whole inter- inside and out?
I believe that was everything, and.
Everybody seems to think our water tower is, like, we get a lot of sales calls on this one too, don't we? Cause we're on a list for something, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe we can get by with the interior, you know, if they go in and everything looks good again. One thing I would like to look at before it gets too far, and I think that's included, is a mixer in there, we've never had one. And just all the schooling and stuff, a mixer would be nice in our water tower. Just gives you steadier, more, you know, the water just turns better in your system, we, you know, you know, we made it by this many years, but hopes in the winter on ice buildup, uh, your chlorine stays at a steadier.
Okay.
Yep. It actually wasn't bad the last how many years, we were using so much water, went down, went up, went down, and then up, and now, you know, we're down fifty, forty thousand gallons a day, runs.
So it's not used as much?
Not quite as much, it does make a difference, we can tell.
Yeah.
So that's why I've been more believing in a mixer, I never was, but.
So if we, if we said water tower reconditioning, you know, we'll say pending inspection and such, what would we need to do to the water bill to help with that?
The, you would.
Come out of the fund.
It would come out of the fund, and we're gonna wa- we manage, manage those fund balances, um, you know, the, I wouldn't put a water tower fee on your bill. That's general maintenance.
Sure.
Should be just built in, so I, yeah, I mean, well, just to give you an idea, nine hundred accounts, buck them, you could, you'll get roughly a thousand bucks a month on a fee, like a dollar or something fee, on roughly nine hundred accounts, so.
So you'd like to have an inspection on that one more time?
I think we should do another inspection, we know the outside's starting to look rough, I mean, it's, that's our city, we want it to look nice.
Yep.
We did the touch-up five years ago, that was the last couple of years, yeah, five, yeah. That was a whatever year patch.
I guess the answer, I only twerked about a couple hundred thousand in the utility funds, that's not unusual. Um, you know, and our cash balance is a little over two million right now, so we have enough fab and flow to handle that. Um, you know, if you get down under that million dollar mark, we gotta look at that, cause if we had something major come, you know, that could.
Yeah, so we're looking at in and out, inside and outside.
This is for a new one, is it?
No.
That four hundred?
No.
No, that's just for the maintenance.
You're looking at millions for a new one.
Oh, I should've thought.
I thought it was two million.
Yeah, maybe. We might look at a third wall instead of a above ground, you know, it's, I like above ground better, but the price tag that comes with it is three times more, four times more.
So, okay. I mean, we've talked about it at the Economic Development Committee, I mean, if we did something with painting with the water tower, you know, would we do something different with, you know? Partnering with a school or, or something along those lines, do you think they'd chip in at all?
The school?
Maybe.
I, I, I've just, they just, they're in much more dire budget position than we are. It's a good idea though, to see if.
You know, well, I mean, if you put like something, you know, Foley Home of the Falcons or, you know, you know, spruce it up a little bit.
Oh, I, yeah, I'd. I, I know Newbauer at one point wanted to paint the Falcon on the tower, like, but that was, you know, quite years ago.
Like that?
Yeah, there it is, yeah, just do that.
Is that the new logo, yeah, you got the new one, yeah, I know you had it done, so.
They did a prototype, you know, cause all these companies are confident, they're up to do it, and they're like.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's what you're talking about, sales calls.
Yeah.
They're calling to do the project.
They, that is, like, probably the most.
May the best, uh, may the lowest bid win.
I don't like the blue bottom on it.
I love the blue bottom.
They, I was, they were talking about the, doing the darker colors though, cause then you don't see like the stuff, the crap, yeah.
That's where, you know, the bottom looks old.
It, it hides it a lot better, and so do the.
This is a different sign lady, right, we don't know the same sign lady doing the water tower.
Anyhow, Brandon.
I mean, I don't know how old I'm gonna be around.
Too soon.
To see him finish some of these projects.
I don't know, there's a lot of projects around here that aren't done.
Yeah, unfortunately. Well, taking a dive in there, having another inspection wouldn't hurt. It's, it's a road now, actually, they don't dive anymore, they send a machine in there, it, yeah.
Can you just get a bid or something and bring it to the next meeting?
Yeah, maybe we'll talk to more engineers and get some ideas what we can do. I don't know if we'll have it in, uh.
When do we need to decide whether or not we wanna take this and kick it down a year?
Not changing your budget.
We're, we're obviously.
You can't change nothing, you could, you could.
You can just stay there.
It can stay there, and then, but you gotta still operate this kind of structure anyway, so.
Sure, okay, so.
If we don't, we'll just know the next year we gotta roll it, so, um.
Yeah, well, just like the water treatment plan for twenty-seven, likely isn't gonna be in twenty-seven.
But if all of a sudden they come knocking here, we got nine million for you.
Sure, yeah.
That'd be nice, yes.
Okay. City of Foley Capital Improvement Plan? For sewer fund. Just more meters. Okay. Seems simple enough. You have one here for, you have twenty-seven here for Hill and Badger sewer improvements.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had that, it.
Wouldn't that go along with?
Yes, that would.
Okay.
I, I just don't think she got that shipped, we just didn't get that shipped over.
Okay.
Or we pushed one too many, yeah, cause we won't do it twenty-seven, we can't.
Well, and I know we, so we tried to update, and I know that's, we made some changes to them, we were trying to update those figures more often because we've been caught so many times, um, with, you know, the prices just gone up so much, so, we'll make that change.
So nothing was done over there, twenty-five, right? Or, uh.
Nothing, all we have is. What we got going right now was ripped up. We're not doing a big project for a while, well, we better find another way to pay for it then, I'm telling you.
Twenty, twenty-thirty is the next big, we'll call it, street sewer project.
Or I am gonna go on protest, but I don't.
The next biggest project should be the water treatment facility plant before we do any road work.
And I still think that a couple of years in between, like, smaller things is what we need to focus on now. I think the staffing would appreciate that too, a bit, cause they, you know, so.
I'll break.
Before they get too many. We have the fifty thousand this year for sewer, if I can, I'd like the line Cottage Grove Sewer yet this year, but struggling on a second bid. I sent some information yesterday trying to get that, so we might see that yet this fall.
Okay.
That was thirty thousand.
Is that the one we didn't do, when we did the streets or no?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Into sewer or water?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, moving in the pool. Just the pool filter replacement. Now, this would affect the levy, no?
It's going to come out of cash, so the levy portion of that twenty thousand that I said is underfunded.
Yep.
This will decrease the cash.
Okay.
Because we're obviously spending, you know, and there's only two hundred and sixty-eight, I think, roughly. And then what we'll wanna do is, you know, levy some dollars back, we wanna, you know, watch that cash burn, cause once we get to the full basin.
Right.
You know, these little ten, twenty thousand, that's not a big deal.
The big ones, okay.
This is a special revenue fund, so.
Anyone object on the?
Well, the filter system is a must, though, right?
Filters?
It's just the getting parts are, yeah, they are obsolete, and that's, say, all people run right to the factory, you know?
Okay. All right. Fire. The bombardier. You have a.
Why was seventy-five, twenty-five?
I see, why do you have twenty-five and twenty-six there?
We cut it last year, we didn't think we were gonna get it.
That's right, we did cut it last year.
It's just a way to cut it.
But we got it.
No, we haven't got it yet.
Oh, are you still looking for one? Okay. So what's the twenty-five and twenty-six then?
We picked a budget, we had a hundred thousand budget in it.
Okay.
So we figured, you know, chance of finding one last year.
All right.
They're hard to come by, we just.
We, we levied for seventy-five, and then levied for the rest that's coming out.
Thinking that we won't get it till this year.
And we bought Tinker Three.
Yep.
So you have font one?
The tanker, Tinker Three.
The K five.
We did another one.
We have a bone in K five, I know.
Okay, okay.
We're on the list with DNR, if we can get what they said, I'd be happy, we'll be way under that price, but.
Okay.
Whether we'll see it or not come winter, I don't know.
So that'll stay in the twenty-twenty-six budget?
For now, yeah, in the CIP, yeah.
And then, uh, parking lot, that hasn't been done yet for this year?
No, kind of waiting to see what Chris is gonna, Bird's gonna do on Norman, you know, that's a milling overlay and.
Okay.
Do like they did on theirs and add it on to a project maybe.
Okay. All right.
Is he gonna do it this year, next year?
It's not for a couple of years, but I don't know, is it gonna last? You know?
Well, we've already budgeted for it, so now it's just a matter of timing at this point, just finding time.
Right. Like, we have open up to tweak it and.
All right.
I think she's gonna do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what they did with the county shop out there, they put that on their road, saw they redid that.
On the good price.
They had all, yeah, they had all those good prices, so they, I thought they did the shop this year.
Okay, we talked about, so moving on to the additional budget items for twenty-six and the next few years.
That's just stuff that I, I say nothing else.
We already kinda talked about the overlays, we're kind of underfunded there on some of those milling overlays. Additional sidewalk, you know, additional play structures.
Yeah, it's just things that, hey, if we had money, we would do.
Yeah.
Just remind you, there's a lot of things we.
Trails. I'd like to see, uh, I'd like to see the new public works maintenance shop sooner than later.
I'd like to see them get out of their cave that they're in now.
Yeah, that's.
We've been talking that for years, huh?
Demolition and old disposal plant, eighty-two thousand dollars, I think it is. From Landbury.
To demo?
I think it was, I just got it in the last couple of weeks, I, I had no idea what to expect. So I, Aaron, who did the brown, he's come, cause I, you know, you know Landbury, and I believe it was eighty, I did not word it on, just thinking and.
And is it, this is the one that's out by the?
The old round building down there, that's, we took out, we're, we're, we're cutting the insurance back, I guess.
We're just putting our liability on it, but not putting the full replacement, because they had it scheduled and it's, now, the appraisal just went, well, it's not worth three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, geez.
I'm sorry, eighty-three thousand, I'm sorry.
Oh, wow.
So we just kept, we just requested to keep liability, you know, just to cover ourselves, it's something we're getting hurt on it.
So what exactly, they take the building down and fill it in? Yeah, they take it, that's including grinding, hauling it out, digging, there was a basement under, over half that, we're here. And, uh, hammer it all out of there, walls are twelve inch thick, with three bars, so.
Have you, uh, come up with an actual plan for a new office, you're gonna include it in one of the shops or go separate or?
Probably go separate, just for building code reasons.
Okay.
But, let me see, once we do a little more on funding, we can do more.
Have you come up with, uh, anything to get a close figure?
We had a price, we did that grant a few years ago.
Oh, it was a rough, high, like somebody just estimated it wasn't, no.
Yeah.
Well, six, would that come out of the, just the Water Enterprise Fund too then?
Yep, so then, what happens is if like the wastewater, you can't, then you do a loan, like, and if you could do a PFA loan for like the water stuff too. It's like our wastewater loan would be the same kind of thing.
Would, would the well number six help eliminate some of the water discoloration?
No.
I say that we need the treatment plan for that.
We need the treatment for that, it's the same aquifer.
Sure.
So I don't, I would have a hard time saying it's gonna help.
I, I would say, no, cause the irons all come from the same spot.
We'd be lying to the people.
Okay, that's good to know, then.
And it's really not, um, how does the well is, it could be an issue, our usage is down, you know, but if we, as we grow, that's where it's gonna become an issue. If all of a sudden you get another couple of high water users and, it's not a pressing issue as we currently run right now, is that correct?
Is the discoloration, um, more prevalent in some areas of town than others?
Yes, has to be, cause I don't have, I've never had, I've never had discoloration.
Yeah.
I don't have it. But I've told Sarah before, like, my aunt and uncle will call me out there just to show me their water, so I just don't know if it was like in one general area or.
It seems to be just a couple places, it doesn't make sense to me at all.
Or the age of the home matter at all, or age of the pipes?
No, it should.
Camp of Meadows is one.
Maple.
Out there in that area, and then you get down by, who's down in the, I can't remember names, but right down in the, you know, the nursing home, that area.
I, I almost wonder if it's partly like settling in certain places, then it gets pushed, you know, like depending on usage. I, I don't know, cause it is like, it just doesn't make sense, and then sometimes they're not even flushing and they're getting it.
I've never seen anything like it coming out of my faucet.
Yeah.
I've never, I live in Camp of Meadows, I've, I've never had discolored water.
Yeah, I, uh, you talked to Mike Casner.
I have a water softener.
That's what I mean, two blocks, a block away, and they go.
Mike Casner.
I don't know if a water softener matters, but, I mean, I have a water softener.
Some people have got this kinetic.
I don't know if that's what.
They say they gotta change all the filters when this happens, it's that bad.
I don't know.
Climate seems to be the problem ones, that.
So it's just, you know, it's just, it's really weird.
If my water sits, I get a discoloration, but that's over time, I don't have it any now, but, uh, First Avenue, she was complaining about the color of her water, so, and that's weird, cause I would've seen it.
That is weird, I've been, I've been there twelve years, I've, I've never noticed anything weird about the water, and I drink it every day.
Well, when I've seen it, it's the color of this unit right here, that's the color of the water.
Weird.
It's that black.
Yeah, that's what you showed me.
Yeah, the manganese.
Is that the manganese, from the manganese?
Yeah, but, but we get, the brown is the iron.
Brown is the iron.
Yeah, yeah, this was a black, black.
Yeah, that's the manganese.
Well, I'd love a water treatment plant tomorrow, but I don't think anyone's gonna allow for that.
Buy a Powerball ticket, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, good donor in the city.
Are you gonna donate then for the water treatment plant?
Negative.
Say write it down. Okay, well, yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we, we know that we need a water treatment facility plant, we know that it costs a lot of money, we're gonna wait hopefully and get maybe. Um, some appropriations to pay for up to half ideally. But if, if we're truly having, I mean, hard to say, it's something that's very hit or miss. Maybe it needs to be done sooner rather than later, and we just, I mean, I don't know. That's wild, okay.
Fire hall, lean-to? Or a storage out back, you know?
Like a storage shed?
Put a detached garage. It's probably gonna be cheaper than putting a lean-to on it someday.
And then the roof? Was that in the CIP?
Mm-hmm.
That's listed, I think it's a hundred grand in there.
Yeah, we upped that to a hundred, moved it a couple of years.
I say we moved it, didn't we?
Couple of years away.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Unless also we see the parking lot not gonna happen till twenty-eight or something like that.
Well, then we can bump that one up.
We could, you know, swap them or.
We essentially have, there's essentially nothing, right?
Or.
For, for, I mean, besides the J five, there's nothing in for twenty-six.
The trucks are about every five years or so, so I just got one, so now we should.
It was four hundred and some thousand on a truck, so that's why.
Engine two will be next and.
Yeah.
How critical is that, uh, exhaust ventilation system?
If I had my way, we would've done it ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, you know? You know?
That wasn't in the plan when they built that?
No.
Can't believe that, yeah.
We tried grants on it, we gave up on that because our fire hall's not used enough. They want, you know, the cities that have, um, city hall, fire hall, township halls, whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, things like that. Now we've looked at, you know, maybe we do just two lanes or something and make the system big enough to upgrade, you know?
Can you incorporate that when it comes to replacing the roof?
You wouldn't go through the roof.
No.
No.
So you don't, you don't have to worry about that.
You don't go up, you go out.
Okay.
There, there's a power fan on it.
Yeah, makes sense.
I will say, I mean, trucks are, the diesel's bad on everything, but.
Pretty heavy.
They're, they're cleaner burning now than they were before. They're just terrible in there. But that's what's getting, you know, that on the, the exhaust from the vehicles is getting on the guy's turnout here, and that's what they're putting on, then they're going home and grabbing the kids and.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a.
How it comes off there, you see, but it doesn't come off the metal, you see, trust me.
We went over the fee schedule, I don't know if you, there was only just those few things, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing, my fee's a matter of the water and sewer. Okay.
What do you, I guess I just didn't know if we're comfortable moving ahead with what we have.
So right, so we didn't really change anything.
No.
We're still, so we're still at the point, seven point nine five, uh, and we're usually ahead of the game, right? We don't even know what surrounding cities are, most of them yet.
Usually, yeah, we haven't seen a lot.
And we don't have to decision on this until when again?
We will, I'll.
That's like where it's official?
September second, I will put the preliminary.
Yep.
You can go down from there, but you can't go up.
Right.
So if you're.
Well, yeah.
If you're concerned about if we should go, you know, extra ten here, or we should, we should go to the higher number and then bring it down.
I have, I saw no reason for us to go up. I didn't see anything in there that we would need to increase. I mean, besides the things that are in the. If anything, does anything with fire, does that change the levy?
Fire's a levied fund.
Okay.
I mean, it does have cash, so it's a special revenue fund, so that's in the cash, you know?
The health insurance costs won't really be final levels.
We won't get those till October.
Till the end of the year?
October.
Okay.
Yep, and like I said, they, they kinda roughly think ten percent, but that's what no, like, it could, we still could change our deductible on things too.
We already factored that in, right?
Yep, that's in.
So if it ends up being less, then we would, then that would essentially lower.
And remember, you get the, the employer and employee, you know, they, they, um, each have to pick up their portion.
Sure.
Um, and then the paid family leave is factored in, um. We did the recommended insurance increase, you know, the league insurance stuff, so. I don't think we would go too crazy in that respect, I don't think so, but.
So if we had to raise our levy, where, how low can we go to still keep it comfortable? I mean, not low, how, how can we go, we keep it low enough?
Say we can't get, I mean, can't get too much lower, we're hardly able to fund the things that we have to take care of.
I mean, increase, but how low can we keep that? If it makes sense, a low increase.
I mean, what, uh, just ballpark, what does ten thousand dollars do to the levy? Let me just carry it just from a percentage standpoint.
Sure.
Because that's was my only question, if you wanted that ten thousand, add it back in for the part-time.
Oh, that's a knockhole, I want to.
Look at eight point five, eight point six.
I screwed up that, hold on.
Right.
It's false, it's not false. Oh, dang it.
Undo, undo.
That's what I'm gonna have to do, I think. Undo again, there we go, okay, so let's try, let's just try here. There we go.
Okay. So raises it a decent amount.
A little less than a percent.
Yeah.
And that's the increase from last year to this year, so that's that, the dollars were going up, that's the change. Um, and then I, I don't know if I mentioned in the memo, I think we did, we don't have a lot of our new construction on yet. Because it takes, you know, there's always a leg, so. Some of that will help, like, in subsequent years. Just this year, we don't have a ton of new construction.
So we could say about. About fifteen thousand dollars is what would, would be a one percent increase.
There, play with that a little bit if you want. Thirteen is that. Okay, close. Yeah.
Yeah, it's fifteen.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
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 About.
Fifteen, fourteen and a half. Do we have to have the fif, like, let's say we just, let's say we just wanna throw fifteen thousand in there, just to have the buffer so we can go backwards?
That's not hard to do. I mean, if we just, I would just change that operating and then it would roll into the general fund, we'd actually just go up fifteen thousand. And then you could bring it back if you want to.
I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what we do with fifteen thousand.
If you're just, if you're uncertain.
Fifteen thousand dollars doesn't get you very much of anything.
Um, if, if you're uncertain, I just encourage you to do the higher of the two, because you can always back it down, but you can't go up.
Right.
I'd rather have a buffer, I guess. Is that intended for the part-time?
Could be, I mean, I, I don't know.
That's just that, I mean, we've got a lot of things.
Yeah, I mean, the, the street projects and all that, that's all concerning, I mean. We continue to underfund that.
So then, maybe what you need to think about is, if you are increasing it, you know, what, what's the general consensus, do you think of, uh, your constituents? You know, do they, would they be increased for this, but not this, you know, maybe that's how you look at it too.
Right, I mean, like we talk about, you know, water. Everyone wants better water, but no one wants to pay for, right, actually doing what needs to be done to take care of it, everyone wants better street, no one wants to have to pay to make the streets better.
Yeah, but, but also too, you could, do the constituents, you know, is it police? Is it, um, streets, is it, you know, what, what do they want to? You know, if you're going to, that's what you're gonna, that's what they're gonna ask you. Well, it went up a percent because we wanted to add it for this, and, and that's what the, you know, the question's gonna be.
So this is, the, the preliminary is September first?
September second.
September second?
Yep.
And then, we just can't go up anymore at that point?
So the preliminary is what goes on, on the, the proposed statements that everybody gets.
Okay.
So you get a ga, a good gauge on, everybody gets their tax statements, and then you either hear from them or you don't, you know? But they're gonna get, you know, their school, their county, their city, all of it.
And the school hasn't even, the school referendum isn't even on there yet, right, what'll be first?
I am not sure the timing of that. I think it's on, well, no, because I think our proposals came out with it.
Did it?
Yeah.
It might have, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, it is, it is on there already, because I.
I think they had their budgets.
It's already on there, yep.
I mean, I'm fine leaving the fifteen thousand off of there too, I, you know, obviously the best we can do to keep it minimal.
They're still under double digits.
But, but knowing that we continue to underfund what needs to happen through, in our city. And then something happens and we have to, we kick it down the road and we pay more for it later.
I can tell you what I'm hearing from numerous people. They don't want us to be stupid. They don't mind the problems we have. They know that has to be taken care of, many of them are homeowners. They know you have to take care of your roof. Or your leaky basement, but they don't want to hear that we're wasting money on hoots and giggles. They want it to be what we need for a while.
I did not see any hoots and giggles in there.
I don't think we have anything set here.
I can tell you when they hear what gets said here sometimes. And not to pick on you, Brandon, but that theater's generated a hell of a lot of complaints. And it was just an idea, it wasn't a, but those are the things they're pissed about.
I can't say I've heard a lot, but. I was gonna say, I received multiple messages very much in favor for it. And I've not heard one message about it being not a good idea. But, uh, those are what we call pipe dreams.
Yeah. And I feel like.
We're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take out a loan to buy something.
No, I, I know that, but they hear that, and it's in their pocketbook immediately, that's where they're thinking.
Yep.
And it's tough.
Right, but when you, when you do things like that, municipal anything, there's a feasibility study that would be done, I'm making sure that would be profitable.
That's what I tell them, but they don't hear that piece, you're not hearing me.
Right.
They hear you saying.
It's not gonna help, yeah.
I know it. Yeah, yeah.
They hear what you're saying, and they immediately think, this is what's gonna happen.
Hmm, habits, that's a trouble, they don't think.
It's all that information.
But we have to worry about them.
I know, I know.
I mean, I'd take a municipal liquor store over anything.
I would do, but.
I'm there. Mister Mayor, can I please allocate for the ten thousand for the part-timer account? Our numbers are increasing, we've had, last weekend alone, we had three domestics in just one weekend. So, I mean, that's increasing, we had thefts and burglaries are increasing. I mean, I, we need the coverage. And we're at a point where myself, for sure, is over on comp and vacation, and so is a lot of my other part-timers. And right now, I'm working on the schedule for October through December, and I'm having to, my vacation days that I want off, I'm not gonna get off because I can't find somebody to work.
Sure.
So we need that extra money in there, I mean, I know Mark's over too, on his comp time for his guys and him, but.
We gotta go up with the plan, what we're gonna do about that.
Yeah.
What do you wanna do, us, like me to do?
All right.
And so.
I'll take a week off, but I'm shutting my phone off.
So we need that ten thousand.
We need to come check somehow.
Right.
Before I lose it. Well, I, I don't want you to lose it, you've earned it, you know? I, I'd love to go home, but when we get through and have it to the water and the basement at whatever time of day, I can't leave it go.
Mm-hmm.
The sewer's back and up.
Which is exactly why I would like to avoid major projects the next year or two, because our people need a break.
Right. Sure.
And, and it, it is, it's just, it's exhausting. And they're out in the field on the front lines, and they get the worst of it, both of these two.
As far as the police officer goes. You reduced it ten thousand dollars.
It wasn't the original request.
Okay.
She reduced, she pulled it out, yes.
And it's something we hadn't already had.
We did have it a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it's in there now for that seventy thousand, but then with the increase of wage.
Sure.
It went up to seventy-five.
Okay.
And we don't have that position, though, I mean, it's in the budget, but it's not filled currently, because, um, individual that, we were gonna ask to have it, she, or they said that they didn't want it.
Right.
So.
So. Yeah, I'm fine with that, I, I'm fine keeping the fifteen in there, just to, I mean, if we need to scale back five to meet the ten, and it narrows our budget down a little bit more, levy down, great. And we'll find out more concrete insurance numbers, we'll find out more, um, you know, as we, as the next few weeks go by, we can hopefully see that even get.
Yeah, and I think that is something that, um, just to think about is, is what is our long-term, we keep talking about the same problem with our staffing and, but we're not, you know what I mean? And I, I understand, we all understand here, that, that the budget numbers aren't working out, but then what else are we going to do? Is there something else? You know, that.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've had a strained budget for, again, better part of two decades. Building moratorium, no development, nothing happening in our town. But everything else keeps going up. We're putting off projects, we're putting off hiring, um, but at the same time, we dare actually pay for it, so.
Then maybe the fifteen is what we keep in there, and then, but it, the bigger question is, yes, what's, how is this gonna work and, you know, what are we?
Yeah.
Are we, are we gonna be a small city? You know, trying to be in the big world, or are we gonna recognize what we need to be, you know, I, that's, that's kinda where we're at. I think this, our city is kind of on this cusp of a lot of big changes, and we just, you know, we're still, we're still staffed and funded like a small city, but we have big problems.
Yep.
I guess my feeling is where we are as a city. We are in a crappy place to have under-service law enforcement. We are in a crux of people driving through, for one thing. We have people who can't afford housing. And. That means our law enforcement is going to be getting more and more problems. And domestics is one sign that it's not working in fully for families. That's just one of the signs.
Well, I don't think you can pinpoint it just here. You look around, it's everywhere.
I'm saying, look at where.
No, you're not.
It's everywhere, but.
You're not gonna get away from it.
Here, and look at where our town is. You got people driving through, and generally, you know who's on the highway that you don't want in your town? A drug dealer. Like it or not, we got twenty-five, we got twenty-three, we have Saint Cloud, we have Princeton growing. We are in sort of that sweet spot for bad people.
I don't know, with the county and our city.
I was gonna say.
I think we're doing the best we can.
A, a part-time officer unfortunately is not going to help with that.
It will help, it ain't gonna solve it.
Not, won't even help a little bit.
It'll allow vacations.
Doesn't, doesn't mean that we don't need it, but to fool yourself to think that that would all solve the problem, you're, you're very wrong.
I've worked with police departments, I know them, and it does help, it doesn't change, it helps.
All that's doing is covering twenty-four hours.
And it's a visual also.
Yeah, but we're, all we're doing is barely covering the day.
We're, we're just small staff for the city or, you know, what we have going on, we're just too small, that's just the reality of it.
Well, it concerns me that a lot of the time that the department heads and other people have, that they're not able to take the time off. Well, it concerns me that a lot of the time, that the department heads and other people have, that they're not able to take their time off.
Well, it's a big problem.
We're failing you by not being able to ha- have your time off.
I mean, I've talked to you about it, I've, I've talked to you about, everybody said their hours are out of control, there's something, I've mentioned it to, I know I've mentioned it to almost all of you, because it is, I've never seen it like this, ever.
Well, how do we justify adding a police officer and not a public works person? I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it right.
They all need them, they all need them.
Then we do it. I mean, what, add sixty thousand, add another sixty thousand dollars to the, to the budget?
Then set a goal, and start working towards it.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't budget, though, a, a goal to hire somebody, I mean, you either add the sixty thousand dollars a year or you don't. You don't, you don't add ten thousand dollars this year, and ten thousand dollars next year to hire somebody at sixty thousand dollars a year. If you're gonna hire an employee, that's a bottom line expense, period, there is no, there is no fluctuations.
You gotta have the money, you do.
Okay, go, go for it, do it your way.
I, I mean, that's ongoing, and, and that's what, that's what you have to remember, it, it's, it is, yep, it comes every year. It's not like when I bought the lawnmower, and I'm not gonna buy the lawnmower this year, you know, it keeps revolving, and, and we keep people, you know, which is a really good thing. We actually do keep people, but then, yes, it turns out to these people, they've been here for a long time, they have, you know, three, four weeks of vacation, they can't take it, because we just don't have the people to cover. But, it, I didn't mean to like, it just, it's just, you need to recognize, we do have, it's the worst I have ever seen it in my twenty years here, with banks that people have, and not being able to take their time off.
It's our whole society, and I don't know how you're really gonna correct it.
I don't know, it seems like.
Mister Trump is making some improvement, cause he's calling, he's calling the National Guard, and I think there's a whole lot of changes that happened in DC. Which is a big criminal, you think it's bad criminal here, go up there.
If we have no big projects, will that allow for public works to be able to take time off this next year?
I just don't wanna get any snow either.
Yeah, like, all right.
And then, yeah, we just gotta put some gates around the city, so then the.
I mean, if we get, if we need to add a public works person to allow for, not even just time off, but workload, whatever it might be, and we need to hire a police officer to help with the increased year-over-year calls.
I don't need a person, I'll just tell you that right now. We're working, do you need a better full-time or some Katie?
Well, maybe we have to bump that a little bit more.
A full-time person is my dream, but I know with the taxes and, and how it costs, the ultimate dollar, insurance and everything, I know it's not, that's why I'm saying just increase the part-time budget, so I can get that permanent part-timer to get, I mean, yeah, a full-timer would be my ultimate, but I know that can't happen.
I mean, ideally, we continue to add rooftops and businesses to the city, so we can actually start collecting tax dollars from more than the same nine hundred rooftops we have for the last twenty years.
Or a problem is, yeah, we have, yeah, that is the problem.
The, that is the root cause of the problem, is that.
Expenses have gone up way.
Whatever the reason was, we decided not to grow, and now we're paying for it in a very bad way.
Yep.
So, I mean, take it or leave it, so, let's keep the fifteen thousand dollars in there, it's an eight point nine eight percent levy, it's the same as two years ago. And if we need to scale back five thousand or whatever to keep the ten thousand in for the part-time officer, great, I, I mean, whether we add a full-time op, you know, if we have to wait until we get some more rooftops, great, same with public works, if we have to wait till we get some more rooftops built in here, and we start collecting more taxes, and we just pull, and we just pull the trigger, and we hire another public works.
And maybe next year, uh, you know, that's, some of that new stuff will come on, that might open up a window. The other thing, the state, um, didn't do as many crazy things as it did a couple of years ago, you know, with those benefit things and all, you know, so maybe there won't be as much coming at us from that standpoint, um, you know, prices seem to have, you know, inflation has seemed to slow down a little bit, maybe that, you know, that's the time to do it then.
Yeah. Alright, so are you agreed, leave the levy at eight nine eight?
So eight, nine, eight, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to other business, goose hunting, who wants to go goose hunting? What's, where this coming?
The county wants to hunt geese on their ponds, they're, maybe, and you, Mark and Katie and I are just concerned about telling them no, cause we've told everybody else no, that wants to hunt in town, so we want you guys to make that decision.
The county, what, guys from the county, or what?
We don't allow hunting in the city limits.
What, what ponds, sorry?
The ones right by the highway.
Oh.
They got stormwater retention ponds.
Yeah, to the north, okay.
Right in front.
Well, there's one behind, too, a bigger pond.
Well, yeah, they're to the north. I've seen people hunting by the lagoons.
That we do, we, that's part of our permit to get rid of the geese, that it messes with our.
Got it.
But that's the only hunting we allowed, like, um, Dabrowski requested to hunt, wasn't there somebody else?
Maple Drive.
Go, oh, just, yeah.
Maple Drive, somebody in the swamp.
Maple Drive in the swamp, we've always said no, cause there's no hunting in the city limits, we only let, allow the lagoon hunting for our permit purposes, so.
Have they provided a plan how they're going to do it? I know Colby Ice had to do it at night to get the deer out of the park, so, how, do we know what they would do?
I think they would do it like we do ours and make a schedule, right? Essentially. So it's just a yay or nay, if you're, we just didn't, you know, we contradict, we don't wanna, we wanna make sure if we say yes.
Well, it's pretty well regulated, don't, but you just got more people that wanna use it, is that it?
No, this is a new location.
Oh, but the county highway shop.
Oh.
Oh, really?
Some of the boys wanna go hunting.
Oh, okay. Don't go by that and look for the birds.
I think it's just kinda more of an annoyance right now, that they're, you know, probably because it's been so wet.
But should the county take care of that?
No, it's in our city limits, Gary.
Yeah.
We have an ordinance that prohibits hunting, and we say no to other people, that's why we're like, what do we, can we permit it like they do for the pond? Well, the pond is because the goose poop messes with our, our treatment.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's kind of a.
This is just, just.
That's true.
Just for hunting.
Just annoying birds. I don't think it messes with anything with our treatment, does it, it's just annoying birds.
Okay.
And that's what the county, they just wanna hunt them, right?
I, I'm not against what they wanna do, I understand, I just.
Well, I mean, there's a reason why, uh, we have a permit to get rid of them on our, on our ponds, but up there.
There was a reason we do it on our ponds, and that's been the only hunting we've allowed.
Yeah.
Whereas if you allow them, then you're gonna have.
Right.
Dabrowski, you're gonna have golf course, they're gonna come back and say, well, you allow them, why can't I do it? So you're gonna be opening up a can of worms.
Well. So yay or nay?
I say no.
No.
And now I understand they opened up the slug gun to rifle. That's a no, most parts of concern.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I, somebody told me that the other day.
So no, no, no.
No.
No, okay.
I don't care.
You're.
I, I don't know, that's least of our problems.
Yeah.
Three-way stop near fully public schools.
Mark?
This was brought up by.
Set on Norma?
Norma, and it had the transportation supervisor, they're putting that three-way stop back through the Fourth and Broadway, being blocked. We did it in twenty twenty-two, um, it worked and it didn't work.
Right.
So, it backed, you know, in the morning, it backed cars up to the highway, you know.
I drive it.
Remember that, Gary?
Almost every day, coming up Norman.
It worked back, you know.
Yep, 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 yep.
On to whatever that is, and then over to Ken, I drive it every day to get my mail. Yep, there's more traffic, but because of the way Forest is right now, it's not like you've got nuisance driving.
I think this is for school.
School's not going, school doesn't start until September.
This is related to school.
Right, and, yeah, I don't, you know, I.
This would just be.
There's pros and cons of it.
Are we talking about just temporarily until?
Like we did in November twenty twenty-two, we had that there, I think it was.
So just temporarily.
And you thought it helped, Katie?
But it backed up.
Yeah, it backed up traffic to the highway, and then we had to get out there and direct traffic and pray we didn't get hit. But, yeah, there's pros and cons, and then you have people that forget how a stop sign works, too, so, I mean, but, yeah, it did, you go, you stop, then, I mean, they did keep it going until certain extent, when it got too far backed up.
That was an aspect there, now.
I can go either way.
Yeah, it's kind of a.
Why don't you just put a roundabout in? Why don't you just put a roundabout in?
A Peter roundabout up there.
Yeah, let's do it.
Oh, yeah, well, give it. Raise that another hundred fifty.
I, same thing, I just don't, I mean.
Other options.
So we're just talking about a temporarily, for this, whatever the, few weeks, months, whatever it might be?
You just, we just wanna make sure you know what it is, and what do you guys want to do?
So is it a request from somebody, or do?
School transportation requested it verbally, we don't have any writing.
They're just trying to plan for this, you know, with the construction, they're just trying to make options.
Other option is, we see how the first four days go, and we could have stop signs brought in and put up.
I was gonna say, I'd rather see, I'd rather see how it goes, and if we need to, if we need to react.
Permission, if all of a sudden it, it's a disaster up there, we could put it in, I mean, without waiting.
I would, I'd rather do that.
Although, we're not, we're not meeting that first day of school, we can talk about it again.
If after the first, whatever, four days of school, it seems like a, an absolute disaster, then throw them up.
Staff, uh. Fifty-eight, so has.
With the two-way departments, and we'll work it out.
Staff recommendation.
The plan is to have that intersection open before Wednesday next week of Norman going toward twenty-three, Fourth in there, it won't be complete. It will be open for open house, and then, uh, it might be millings, they're gonna build it, but they're worried when they turn to the sewer there, it might be hard, so, but they will, they assured us again today that they will have it very, much better passable than it is now, you know what it's like, obviously. Try to make it more smoother, and then they say the closures would be during the day, you know. Keep it open in morning and evening, so.
For open house, the school, they put out posting to probably go north and, to try to avoid that area, too, so.
Yeah, they're, they're getting open, so, but Fourth and Broadway by then will, I don't know, do I get going or not, yeah, I do, but, uh, Broadway might get milled end of next week, you know, they gotta get the mill here when they can, but that's not gonna be any different on that road, because there's no blacktop really left on that road anyhow, so. So.
Okay.
I have one more thing, if I could.
Uh, for other business?
I just, um, wanted to check in, so, we're having some issues with people that are refusing to hard surface. Expanding their driveways, widening it, but not hard surfacing, and, you know, there, it goes back to the parking code, with you can do some different things on the side, and then they wanna, oh, I wanna hard service my driveway up to here, but then not the rest of the way, cause that's technically on the side of the house. My question for you is, are we going to enforce this hard surfacing requirement or not, because I, we've kind of been half-assing it, my, for a number of years, like, we kinda forget about that one, don't worry about them, we forget about, you know, at different councils, whatever. How firm do you wanna be on this hard surfacing of driveways?
Well, we really bent the rules way it is, and if they wanna expand, then they should hard service it, that's.
No ifs, ands, or buts, the whole thing, not try to half and half it.
No.
Is it our, it's our code, hard service?
Our code is to hard surface a driveway, but everybody finds a different interpretation and a different fight. Um, and a driver was there, it wasn't there, I'm not changing it, and, yeah, it's.
Certainly, I knew that was a driveway.
I mean, you know, one of the situations, we have another one on the project, you know, now, it's, it's just, it's coming, becoming an ongoing issue, so, before I get too far, I just wanna make sure I understand where the council's position is.
We made the ordinance, so we wouldn't have this at the planning commission, hard surface, moving forward, because ever, at that time, you were getting crushed granite, recycled, all different things, and, and the driveways were, like Sarah said, they are getting a little bit wider and pushing it out, and it was also part of the trailer fiasco that we had to deal with, so, hard surface it and be done with it.
I was, I was afraid of that, you give them a little bit.
Oh, yeah, it's just.
And they wanna.
You know, that's for, what, boats, extra cars, campers, all those kinds of things, that they're.
Your driveway's your driveway.
Driveway.
Yeah.
Your driveway's your driveway, like, and then, well, that's not my driveway, that's my parking surface, and it's, oh, it's just man-made.
They can park on grass in the back inside yard.
Yeah, so people are coming up with all sorts of different ways.
But the situation now, Mark, they're saying, well, no, that's, we, our driveway is this long, and that is just, you know, not part of the driveway, when it should be.
But the, that has to be, can't be crushed granite, right?
No, it can't be, it's gotta be hard surfaced.
Asphalt, concrete, right?
Same thing.
Okay, I, I get the sense that we're all hard surface, firm?
Yeah.
Okay.
And now is the time to do it, when we have a project in town, if people wanna do it.
Okay, that's all, I just, I don't wanna bring something to you, and then all of a sudden, wow, that's not that big of a deal, like, I don't wanna, I, I'm really getting tired of fighting with people about it, so, I just wanna make sure we're clear. Okay, that's all I have to.
Oh, um, motion to adjourn?
I, motion.
Second, go ahead.
Made and seconded, uh, any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close your sign, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Yours is not the only one.
I don't.